Living the dream. I mean, some days it is, but that's okay. We just...
That's right, I'm being positive.
Keep them positive. Yeah.
Both got a nice buck. Not as monstrous we... You know? Hmm?
Casey's expecting.
How are you?
Great, Eric. Fish was amazing. No, we became empty nesters and we're like, let's go somewhere. You're looking a little mischievous over there, Garrett.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome. Appreciate everyone being here. We have Commissioner Fackrell on line with us. Can you hear us, Blaine?
He said he'd be in and out as his meetings allow.
Okay, alright, so... Hopefully he can hear us. Maybe we can't hear him. We'll just dive right into it. Kickoff on our work session on October 7th, 2025. We're gonna start with the kickoff of general plan with planning outpost. Okay? You wanna introduce?
Yeah, Valerie with Planning Outpost.
Is that on?
I don't think so.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Valerie with Planning Outpost is gonna kinda head the meeting. The question is, do you wanna, do you want her to kinda draw and write down things here? Or do you wanna go around the table?
The table is mic'd.
It is mic'd.
What do you think would be best?
It's totally up to you. I think sometimes during the table, it's a little bit easier to...
Okay, well, let's do that.
Bow on your clicker. Alright, so we'll go through the presentation quickly. But don't hesitate to stop me if you have any questions. Alright, so... I'm Valerie Klassen with Planning Outpost. Started the firm in 2021. I saw that there was a real need for land use. I had no idea what the need was in terms of like how much there would be. It's been exciting to be able to work with communities on updating their general plans and do implementation tools of updating some codes and then public engagement spaces. Yeah, no, sorry, I'll go first. Briefly, the agenda, what is a general plan? The project overview and the project schedule, and then the last is the SWOT exercise. What is a general plan and what is not a general plan? It is, a general plan is, and the reason I go over this is because it also helps because a lot of times commissioners are hit up with all these questions because constituents think they know what a general plan is and what it's not. But it is the strategic document long range to guide the growth and development and the vision of the county over ten to twenty years. And its core purpose is to be able to provide decision makers the policies on land use, housing, transportation, public services. It's comprehensive, it is public driven and policy paced. The function and benefits of having a general plan is it coordinates development, it helps qualify for grants and funding. A lot of times you go after money and they're like, well, where is that in your plan? Did you just make this up? No, we've been, we've been thinking about it, we've been planning for it, and you're able to have that in your general plan. It preserves identity and it helps promote advanced planning rather than reactive planning, which as Josh knows, what we all as planners try to do is proactive. And a general plan is a piece of allowing that to happen. The framework questions are of the planning process. It starts with project initiation, doing existing conditions. Then you have the community engagement portion. Those are the community area meetings we'll talk about a little bit later in the presentation. And it leads to the vision and the guiding principles and then the framework. What kind of community do we want to be and how will we get there? As the main overarching question of general plans. What it is not, it is not county laws or the zoning ordinance, it's not just a land use map. And this is the one that most residents often don't get is it is not a guarantee for either a specific rezoning or businesses. They always want Costco, right? They think, oh, the general plan's gonna... You can do things that will create an environment that might bring those kind of uses, but it's not, it's not the guarantee, it's not, it's not the law. Alright, project overview. The objective being an updated general plan and the robust, with a robust engagement plan as well that reflects the current desires and vision of the residents. It's also, in Morgan County's case, to create a single cohesive document. One that has some consistency to it and be able to pull together kind of what in the past bits of different things all over. We're gonna bring it together into a single document as best as possible, right?
Well, currently, the general plan was adopted as a single document and all those little area plans were just put in the appendices. I don't know about you, but when I read a book, the important information isn't in the appendices, it's part of the document. Last place you look for anything is the appendices. So what I think should be done is each of those areas should be incorporated as their own kind of future land use area in the document itself. Yeah, so...
Some chapter, yeah, essentially is what's in vision, like I can see in my head of it kind of all, again cohesive, consistent, right? And some chapters, some of the bigger communities, obviously, are gonna have longer chapters. They're more complex. But that'll be in the document, not as much as...
Yeah.
And have maps, which we're really excited to have. We have some maps, but they're kind of all over the place right now, so... We'll do the old ones, just go with it.
When the new document's adopted, then it's no longer the controlling general plan. The new document would control. So whatever's adopted in the new general plan takes precedence over anything with that.
Good question. And then, oh, if you go back real quick, sorry. State compliance with state law, of course, that is being the, one of the main things that also has to be accomplished that we're able to do with an update. There's just been a couple of changes in the state code that the update will be able to bring the county to clients. And then, and then the recommendation on implementation of the general plan. Okay, thanks, Kate, sorry. Alright, so the public engagement plan, that's kind of a big piece on general plans because you, you want to have that outreach to be able to get what the residence's vision is and what their ideas are on, on planning. Because as I was telling some gentleman back there, I'm like, yeah, a lot of times people wait till they they get the public hearing signed, right? And that's too late. The planning is actually happening here, and so we wanna make sure we have that public outreach. So there are the outreach and the engagement that is required by law, which are the works, the public hearings rather. But we'll also be having work sessions with the commission, planning commission in conjunction then with the public hearings toward the end of adoption. There's a dedicated website at morgancounty.clanetusa.com that will be, that will be four seven, that ex residents can go to in the middle of night when they're bored and they wanna see what's going on. They'll be able to go there and then have a dedicated engagement specialist to answer questions. There'll be stakeholder meetings that will be smaller groups of stakeholders, meaning a lot of times it's gonna be like Chamber of Commerce, Home Builder Association type, Realtors, significant like parcel owners. Those will be identified early on in the process to hold some stakeholder meetings. And then the workshops and open house and events. And that's, we'll go into detail on the next slide with that one. So we're having the kickoff meeting, so that's where we're at today. And, and then going into the community area workshops. And that's where the communities, split them up into those areas that are listed. So Mount Green Peterson, Enterprise Daughter of Milton, Richmond, Porterville, Croydon, Round Valley. Hopefully that's kind of, okay, good. That was one of the things I wanted to make sure the commission was good with. Okay, so that's how we're divvying up with the groups. And we'll go, and the first one will be more of the exercises, more general. Like it's not talking just about land use, it's gonna be exploring with the residents, like what do they value in community, like what is it that's important to them? And, and yeah, land use might be a piece of it, but they're not gonna really be looking at exhibits. They're gonna be talking more about that. And so we've got those that are scheduling up and lining up to be the first part of November. So we'll be holding those. And then, then we go back a second time trip. So we gathered that input, that information. I'll probably report back to probably the commission in December or whatever. Just kinda say, here's the update, here's what we found in these community areas. And then we start to do a early, early, I wouldn't even say plan. We focus more on the exhibits at that point based on what they're saying. So then we get the exhibits started that are going to show the land use. So they're gonna show some of the amenity areas and transportation. And then, then we go back to those same groups and hold meetings. There'll be those same areas to break that down. And then that'll be in an open house format where there are exhibits to look at, where it will scribble on the boards, where they'll talk about, you know, what they want more specifically in land use, those kind of items. And, and then the last event will be the final plan forum. And that's where the plan is all but in final draft. They'll be able to hack here what the residents are doing. And then we'll have also a resident comment review period in that same time frame. So that they'll be able to go, hold the plan, take a look at it, write a comment, and, and get back to us before the adoption process. Any questions so far? There's a lot in like procedural stuff. Does that sound good? This just talks about the schedule just generically. We're, as I mentioned, we're a kickoff here. November will be the, the first round of meetings. The second round definitely be after Christmas. Like that's probably gonna fall, probably January-ish. It kind of depends. There's two philosophies. We can either hit January or we can hit like early spring. Then we'll do the draft plan by summer. And then by fall, we're going to the work sessions and just kinda letting the plan percolate. It's big plan, right? It's gonna have a lot to it. Kinda letting it percolate, get familiar, and then work on adoption by the end of the year. Now...
What was the two philosophy?
It just depends on, is like right after Christmas a good time to catch people? Or is it kinda once the weather breaks and things are right, you wanna hit before? For summer, and then allowing summer to be the time to draft it.
If you do it in spring, it gives their GIS more time to create kind of base maps
Yeah, that's kinda...
that you can use to mark up. I don't know if they'll have that by January.
That's, that's, yeah. Why? We don't know yet. There's kind of a question mark. Once we get into it, we'll know. But it kinda doesn't, the, the main drafting of the plan is gonna be late spring, summer. So it works out great timewise. The one thing that is, is more urgent than not is the requirement, a fairly new requirement for general plans to have to have water use and preservation element. And so that will be done by December 2025. And so we're gonna be able to get that started with our project engineers. And, and one of the things when I talked to Josh was they, there's forty-five, I think, on the list.
There's a lot.
Of water, private water companies or irrigation companies. So if that sounds right, and we'll take a sneak peek at the next slide in a second. But if that sounds right, then we're just kinda working toward getting some information together. And if you guys know any efforts that any of these water companies had already done in preservation, the ones that have to with water are gonna be a little more straightforward because we've really, basin's already been in this mode for like over ten years. I remember going to meetings over ten years ago that they would have. So we'll get, we'll get you guys up to speed on that one and the plan for that. And Kate, if you wanna hit the... And we have some guesses with the list. Oh, I actually had this slide in there too. Okay, good. This is exactly where I was going with it. So this chapter now becomes the first priority, and that is what we're working on so that we can get it to the planning commission by November and then the county commission by, by December 2nd. And it's gonna be, it's not gonna be like sexy or anything. It's a paperwork document. It's gonna meet state standards because it have the provisions that they require. But you're gonna be able to adopt it because it's gonna meet what the state's requiring to be done by December 25th, and then we're gonna incorporate it into the, to the final draft. And then if there's anything else that we find out during that process, we'll update it. But the guts, the guts and what has to be there, we'll have a few ways.
It'll be adopted as part of our current general plan, just as an element that's added to it to meet state statute, but then it'll also be incorporated in the new general plan.
Yeah. So, and then the next slides are the ones that have the list. And the guess is some of them have like a lot more activity to them and then others have zeros, and I'm thinking those are probably just like somebody went and they put in for a water right and said, okay, I'm starting a water company or something. So, but if you guys had any other information on the private water systems, let us, let's know.
Type of information?
Kind of the validity of, Kate, if you could hit the next slide. I'm sorry, we could get both my notes. So like we have these, like it's knowing, cause you can tell, like Enterprise Daughter Irrigation Company, like there's a lot there that looks like with their rights and, I cannot see this far away, but what the state has on file, that we're guessing that there's some of those to focus in on more than others. And some that might not even really exist in reality, so...
What about ones that we're aware of that aren't on the list?
That would be great, cause there was one that our engineers thought might be there, like an east side irrigation that doesn't show up or something, but...
We can send the list out where you can see it there.
Okay, thank you. This is exactly, yeah, what we were... Okay, cool. And then the next slide is just another one, but it does, if we're, if we're, we'll send it out. I can only, yeah, imagine, cause there was, I was actually surprised when we pulled that up. I was like, wait, how? I was not expecting that many, so... So I think what, what'll be nice though is the state laws are requiring some, some coordination, right? Well, because there are so many, at least now they're gonna have a framework and the county's gonna be able to show the state, hey, look, we're making great strides. We didn't have anything like this before. We have it now. And just try and, and get, get it there, so it's, it's not more headaches. Cause we love, we love state mandated requirements. We just absolutely just love them. And not exactly, exactly.
And it has to be done in December.
Well, the, the timing of this is excellent, I think, for...
It did work out great. Like I'm so grateful. And I had like my, so we're, we partner with J U B Engineers and Gateway Mapping, and they are awesome. And so I called them up, I go, hey, we've got a project like now. And they were on it even before, I had scheduled a meeting with them like a day and a half, two days later, and I was already getting deals back and forth. So I was like, okay, good, we're, we're gonna be okay. Because it is a tight, tight turnaround with, with getting it to you guys. But it's also, it also is what it is, right? There's not gonna be a lot of fluff to it. There's not gonna be, you know, it's fortunately not a land use thing that does have a lot of back and forth. It's gonna just be like, hey, we compiled this information, let's get it adopted and get on our way. So, okay, so the last portion, and I appreciate, we're gonna help just for you, this is great, is the SWOT analysis. And that's the framework to allow us to talk about strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. This is also an opportunity though for the commission to like relay what is important to them to, for the plan, right? Like this is a great framework. Cause what happens is we start to see these patterns emerge. We start to see what the commission says, and then we go to the community meetings and then... And then we go to the community meetings and then very similarly, like things come out. You're like, okay, that's not the first time I've heard this. And then, um, sometimes things come out and it is a first time, but then you're able to, to kinda gauge going, okay, well, that's not the first thing. Right? Like you can kinda do that. So, um, so if we wanna do the SWOT, um, I, since we're close, I'm gonna just type it out. It makes life so much easier than throwing it on the board. Um, and so, and then, um, we also have the stakeholder questionnaire that if you guys give a second to fill out, um, unless there were things you, you even wanna talk about now, um, we can, we can also cover a few of that as well. Cause this SWOT analysis isn't gonna take forever. Um, but, um, and then, yeah, so if there's, if you guys wanna just kinda start with like what the strengths are, um, of, of the county, what, what do you have that's working, that's- or weaknesses, we always start, sometimes starting with weaknesses. I know that sounds horrible, but, but the fact that it's strengths, cause usually strength comes out with the people. And then it's like quiet and then you're like, okay, let's talk about weaknesses then. So we can, we can jump around too. So, um, what are some themes, um, that, I mean, you said, like, is like water companies, right? That, I mean, that could be something that could be problematic.
You have water companies, um, the lack of sewer systems creates challenges in certain areas.
And is that challenges in areas that would like to grow too?
Well, that depends on the, yeah, it's crazy. I mean, cause I guess there's a train of thought of as long as you don't have a countywide sewer system, you don't have growth and that does control it to some degree for others. So there's a thought of you're potentially gonna end up in a point where you're contaminating water if you don't do anything about it and growth continues, so.
I think, um, where's the, yeah. I mean, adding contaminating to the threat, by the way, I'm going, I'm going back in that. What you said was-
One of our weaknesses is 95% privately owned, which is really difficult.
I'll go talk to some of those county commissioners down south where they're 5% privately owned. They might tell you that's a threat. So I guess it depends on, I mean, I think it could be both.
Depends where you're trying to do.
Yeah, it depends on what you're trying to do, so.
Yeah, sorry.
I'd say, you know, when we're trying to get things for people, you know, ball fields and parks and trails and it's all privately owned, we're, we're under your time. But if you have lots of private or public ground, then it's like we have the funding to build those things.
Or that's a law, stop it from it anyway, right?
It's there, but you can't touch it. Yeah.
I have a question if I can ask?
Yes.
Um, are the area plans gonna be part of the general plan?
Yes, Commissioner Fackel, they're gonna be, it's gonna be one comprehensive plan that has like a chapter for each of those community areas.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. That was a great question, cause yeah, the appendices are kind of all over the place. And so we're gonna try and get it so it has consistency.
You know, this could, I, I think one of our strengths in our communities, I, I think a lot of people are passionate about Morgan, that they, they, they have their thoughts and we may not agree, but they, they stick to them. They, they know what they want, what they're, as, as Ray links, that we're not connected. It's like I live in Milton, and so I don't really have a connection to Mount Green. You know, I still care about Mount Green. I want it to, to be a good community and I want people to enjoy living there. I, I think we're passionate about keeping Morgan why we live here in the first place, if that makes sense.
Strength wise, we have maybe some opportunities as well. And we have a lot of natural resources here, a couple of state parks. We've got a lot of, um, rivers, you know, skiing close by. We're, we're very close to a lot of recreational opportunities. And I think that's definitely an opportunity, maybe a strength as well.
I think that kinda leads to making us a destination for people to come and visit, spend their money. It's a place that people wanna come to.
Um, I think something that's maybe, I won't call this a threat or weakness, but rising property values are making it really difficult for our children to be able to live in the community. It's becoming increasingly difficult to acquire property here. And I'm sure that's a nationwide problem. That's not just a Morgan thing, but, you know, we have some of the highest property values in the state. And as that continues to go up, which will, it's gonna become less and less affordable. Which creates challenges when it comes to diversity in communities as well. You kinda lose that.
Which also creates, which aren't affordable, but-
Well, yeah, cause the, the next step is we'll, what do we do about it, right? And affordability is synonymous with high density and so then you end up in-
Everyone feels like there's too many towns, alright.
Well, and, yeah, I mean, like, high property values contribute to that, right? Because if you're a developer, you're gonna try to recover as much of your costs as you can. And if your entry point to buy property is very high, then, you know, what you do to that property increase the value, it has to be even higher.
Did they create affordable?
Yeah, which, you know, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar townhomes are not really affordable in my mind, but-
And is that the type of development that that community wants?
Yeah, yeah. I mean-
I, I see that under the threats. Now, on threats, that pressure, that high density, we're, we're pulling the heartstrings of affordability and pushing it with high density. And I think when we start our, given areas, that's such a huge threat to them. They do not wanna see that, that, you know, and, and I'll be, they talked about it, has to impact. We all take risks. It doesn't start, if it go down, you buy property, it may work, it may not work. It's, you take the risk, okay? And do we put that, and I think when people see that as a threat, are we putting the desire of the developer to make money on the labs for residents is something they don't want? I think that's, that's one of the things that I tell you more, because, um, it's not our job as the community, United, United businesses, to make sure the developer makes money to risk. You buy the property, it, it might all fall apart, tank tomorrow, we don't have, um, we're all in business to make money. But are we willing to, this is what you're, are we willing to destroy our community to make sure somebody makes a buck? And so, the, the people are wishing that as a visitor.
You know, I, I would also add, and maybe this isn't, I don't know that this strategy need to us, but the threat of, of overreach from the state legislature in terms of, um, land use decisions is definitely strong. We're dealing with a situation right now where, um, we have very little control over, and I think that's, that's concerning to the residents market. But, you know, their elected officials don't have control over what's happening.
Wamping is an opportunity, and I think this has been said many times, especially with the Mount Green area, is we have opportunities to create something unique and very desirable, that we have one shot to get it right. We have an opportunity to, to guide this and, but again, we have the ability to guide it. I think people are willing to work with us. We have an amazing opportunity up in this county, it's virtually got to action when you compare it to surrounding counties. Um, it's shocking that we kept this way for as long as it has. So we have an opportunity to really guide and build something unique, special.
Is that a, is it like, what was saying? Seems like most of the development is in Mount Green, Mount Green, one chance you can do this right. Where else do you think you have a one chance to get this right?
I think, I think it's, I think it's everywhere.
It's everywhere.
I think it's enterprise and stolen.
And the truth is, there, there would be more development out there if there was a sewer system. And that's why Mount Green and Morgan City have the vast amount of these places. They have a sewer and a water system that can, and that's where the county are doing. So, you know, right, wrong, or indifferent, that's the way it is. You know, I, I also think though, and maybe this is a strength, maybe it's a weakness, but you mentioned, you know, developing one shot to get it right. But one of the challenges of that is you've got multiple property owners, multiple developers with different ideas of how to do it. And sometimes it's difficult to bring all of them into the same, you know, at the same table and say, okay, this is the vision, you know, can you catch it? Especially if that vision doesn't maximize their profits, right? Which is, you know, back to the townhome discussion, right? It's like, we wanna pack it with townhomes, cause that maximizes their profit. Well, but as, as community leaders and as members of the community, we're saying, look, yeah, there's a place for townhomes. We need, we need some entry level housing. We need housing for the aging and elderly. I mean, we've got a, a big population that are living on three to five acres and they don't wanna take care of it. They want a patio home that they can live in and, you know, and retire in. But they don't have that opportunity in Morgan County. So, I mean, those are all, I guess, challenges in, in the type of housing that we have as well. Cause we don't have a great, at least I feel like, a good diversity of housing types, right? It's, at least more recently, the more homes we build in this community are gigantic homes. Of course, that's another, I guess, threat from, from a fire safety and a public safety standpoint. We, we don't have a full-time fire department in Morgan County. Uh, well, I guess Mount Green does now. They're, they're basically a full-time thing. Uh, but, you know, the Morgan County Fire Department is not. And you build these really large homes and they catch fire. You need a lot of personnel and a lot of equipment to take care of them. That's expensive. So, you know, we're faced with the growing pain with that as well.
You kind of sound like you have like the opposite, that you've got like these mansions, right?
We're very strange.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah. And, and it's hard because, I'm gonna give my commentary too, right? Like it's the age in which development is now occurring, like of being twenty twenty-five, that then you're like, what happened to those eight thousand square foot lots, right? But now all of a sudden become unaffordable, but yet ultimately that can be very, very desirable. So that's what's great about having the general plan, is that then people can, you can help bring these people, let's say this is our playbook, are you guys a player or not, right? The developers, property owners, and have a little bit of, um, combined vision on that versus it feeling like, oh, like whiplash, like we're gonna do that today? No, we don't agree with that, so. Um, but yeah, hearing that it's kind of the extremes on the, on the housing. So that's, that is, that I would say is probably-
Opportunity wise, I think we have some fairly tight knit neighborhoods and areas of our community. I think that's an opportunity for good communication, good discussion, right? To hopefully bring a lot of people out to these public hearings. Cause one of the things that has always frustrated me with, with the area plan, the county general plan, is that I've always felt like often it's a very small group of people who get together and make those, those decisions or those suggestions, right? And if you didn't happen to show up that night and put your suggestion in, you don't get a say, right? And I don't, I don't love that, especially because I feel like those who show up sometimes are not always, they're the loudest often, but they're not always what people really want. You know, I mean, I remember we had one that helped an area plan come in and say to us, well, before you do anything in this area, you need to talk to me. It's like, but who are you? You weren't elected, like, you, you know what I mean? And that's great that they wanna be involved in their, in their area, but hopefully we can use that as an opportunity to say, hey, we need as many people as can to come to these things and do what they're willing to do. Tell us what you really want. This is your opportunity to envision the future of Morgan County, whatever that looks like.
And that's the nice thing with general plans too, is they aren't done like overnight, right? There is that, that, um, um, there's some right where, but there's that time. Like there's, there's the process and so hopefully, um, like the ones like for, the first set of meetings, those are common attempt, right? Like, but you're gonna have some people like, oh, well, I don't wanna spend that much time. But then they can still go to the website, project website, try, you know, do the form that way to say, okay, I wanna still say something. Um, then the open house is often, for the people that are just kinda like, oh, I just wanna come in and go, right? Um, so we're giving lots of different avenues and options to be able to, to participate. Um, and then at the end of the day, yeah, the commission's gonna be able to say, hey, well, didn't you know about these eight things that you could have, you know, done and sixteen things over the last fourteen months? And so that, that helps to do, um, and hopefully we get those outliers. That's what I get to, get to, um, take is the outlier people and, and, um, listen to what they say and can, can again compile it all into, um, matrices. It doesn't mean it gets, like, just cause they say it, it's like, oh, well, that's a little plan. It's matrices that then say create these comments, aim, evaluate those comments. So, um, we've talked about like what the, the county's usual channel of communication are. Um, and so it is, it is tough if there's not already built in, you know, social media. Social media's been the biggest right now. You do fit a lot. Um, you even do hit older demographic. I know that sounds funny, but you do, um, with the social media. Um, and so there's those, there's gonna be the traditional, um, yeah, I don't, well, we had not talked about-
Let's talk to Morgan City about putting it on their sign. Yeah, we want to put on the fire station sign.
This is great.
Talked about- Maybe we oughta even put up some like signs or banners or something in some of the intersections like off the freeway off ramps. Okay, Morgan County general plan. Cause I hate when people are like, oh, I didn't know about that.
This is, they're not looking.
And, and, yeah, rightfully so, right? I get it, but I don't want it to be our fault for you to know about that.
Right. So the location-
Even if we have to spend some money to put signs and whatever, I think we should do it.
So location of the, like you're saying, the banners, like, like is there city owned property? Like, do you guys kind of already have in your head, like, hey, we can put the mirror?
Yep.
That, okay.
Like we can put on the fence of Kinsman Park, we can put one by the Peterson exit. We can put one here by the Morgan exit, we can put something. We have one in our eyes, it's like, there's different places we can do that.
Is that five places?
I'd plan like seven or eight, if we can get seven or eight banners or something, yeah.
Totally doable, oh my gosh.
And between us, we'd be happy to, well, maybe a volunteer. I think a few of us would be happy to go and put them-
My husband will do it. If that piece that I will-
You're, you're volunteering for it.
Okay. No, seriously, that's really, like, the logistics of that, like, is difficult from, like, thank you. That would be huge, cause I, I get banners, that's like not a problem at all.
And we put out banners for county parents though, so we have specific places that we kinda advertise for community things, so we kinda help.
Okay, with these communities, basically. Okay, that, and that's what I was gonna about, I was gonna follow up on is that, um, so we were thinking that the Mount Green Peterson would need to be held at the middle school for the bigger room out there? And then the rest of Morgan would be here.
Well, maybe, maybe your signs are as simple as Morgan County's redoing our general plan to find out more and to become a volunteer, there's a QR code, you scan the QR code, it tells you the dates and the times and locations.
That's good.
And then you know, or on the Peterson area, I think the school-
Versus do, okay, cause it might have like, okay, I could do, we know like Mount Green, like we could do the dates for the different meetings, but the QR code might be a better thing, cause then it can get them, uh- Yeah, because they're gonna go, they're gonna go to the website.
That would be really awesome, maybe we could talk to Jerry about this, but if it takes it to the website, maybe we could even have like an add to my calendar, making people click, so it throws it onto their Google calendar, they're out look a little. Let's, let's get this out there, let's get it done.
Well, and that is one of the, the biggest hurdles and like as, I can't say that as the outside consultant, like, well, this is, I, I can do some experience, like, okay, other jurisdictions, they have social media, they, so, some do the mailers kinda thing, some, um, you know, anyway. And, and that's, that, we can figure that out too, if we wanna do mailers. Kinda thing too. Um, this first one will be a quick turnaround, but I would think.
Um, Val, what do you, how do you want, like, I had Erin come in, she's my library director. How do you want them to participate in this for future needs of like library, bookmobiles, et cetera?
In terms of, um, the community engagement piece or the actual plan?
I don't know.
You could probably do both, right, Erin?
Yeah, absolutely.
We could have advertising about getting people to it.
Yeah.
But I think you're probably thinking more along the lines of how does the library fit into the plan and how do we gauge need and that sort of thing? Is that something we can put in the questionnaires or whatever?
Yeah, are you wanting, yeah, get more information on?
Actually, I use it on my ideas, because Kate asked me to come, and so I'm just kind of listening, but yes, anything we could do either to support the plan and help get the word out. Or to gather information on our own to better represent community needs, we would love to work on that, that would be really helpful. Because we're also reworking our strategic plan in the next little while, so.
The general plan should have an element for public facilities and the library should be a portion of it.
Yes.
It needs to be, yeah, information related to the strategic plan should be in there.
That would be good, and I would actually put that as, as a weakness, is our lack of public gathering places. And, and lack of community resources, especially outside of Morgan City.
So like a government, um.
Lack of access to.
Access, thank you. Oh, so now it's like, oh.
Because of the senior center that, you know, everything is right here in the city.
Well, and our demographics are changing really fast, increasing costs here in Morgan, whether you're talking to the school. How much kind of strength of the community compared to these families, not even working for the library. There's a pretty big population that are retiring and leaving, or passing away or whatever, which is a lot of that.
Threat, yeah, I would say a little bit of a threat there is what I added to, it's like, yeah, your school population decreasing. What used to be people like, oh, I'm gonna go live out there, we need this portable, uh.
We have a pretty good network of young families, obviously, the more contact with the library, so if we'd like input from them too, we'd be more than happy to help promote this.
Touch on this briefly, spot it. Even if they, you're saying to capture, even if that's all they do, right? Like, is, like, what can we still do to capture? And I think we've talked about that in our school, we've stagnated.
We leak a tremendous amount of tax revenue into other counties, both because most of our population works outside the county, so they travel outside and they stop and buy groceries and whatever else. And Davis or Leaver, it's all in counties. And then we have a lot of people that come to recreate that don't spend the money here, we'd like them to stop and drop a little money on the way through. In part, I think we don't capture that well because of our transportation systems, right? Because it's not a great, at least in, you know, the tramper's loop area, there's not a great place to get on and off. And then in part, there's just not enough services to provide for people. While that's changing and growing, it's just not there.
You have a ride, you're so like, you stop like.
It's time to move.
The tourist.
You get a stop line, it's time to move.
You know, I think one of our biggest weaknesses that we run into probably every commission meeting is just the lack of, of funds. Although Morgan is, is fairly affluent, our county government is, is pretty poor by government standards, I mean, our overall budget's about ten million dollars a year. That's not a lot of money to, to operate an entire government out of, so. You know, we, we have a lack of road funding, if we want federal grants, we'd be sunk. We have a lack of sales tax revenue. We rely heavily and largely on property tax revenue. And we have some of the highest property tax rates from the school district to the, in the state. It's about the top five at least. So, those are challenges, right? Because if, if money weren't an object, we could take care of a lot of those, and those issues pretty fast, right?
Yeah.
You could build trails, you could, you could add parks and, and libraries and whatever else, you could do a lot of government services if you had the money. But it feels like a lot of decisions come down to can be brought around.
I'm not, that's not working.
Go drive through Chino Valley, Arizona, then come back and tell me that you're safe.
I've heard about running over bicycles.
It's just still there, but you get tunnels with.
Threats, our proximity to the loss hatch front. You know, if you give COVID taught us anything, it taught us that we don't have to live where we work, at least for a lot of occupations. And so there's more pressure to, to leave some of these urbanized areas and move to more rural areas, which is. Can be a strength for us, but it can also, and an opportunity, but it's also a threat in some ways, because it, you know. We like to think of ourselves as an agricultural community, I think we still have quite a lot of agriculture, but. Factory land costs and water costs and regulations, farming is a profitable one, so it makes it very difficult for me to, you know, hold on. The agricultural, we haven't been very long. Well, that's a good question, because I think it depends on whether you include all of the range ground. If you include range ground, it's a huge percentage, right? But if you're talking just farmable ground, you know, really our valley floors, some of our benches have a little bit of a.
Most of us are area driven, you know, we don't use range ground.
Range ground, it's.
You get what you get.
It's not super productive, and because our growing season isn't super long, the truth is, we're not the best place for agriculture. I mean, when you can get five cuts of hay in Bucks Elder County and two here, you know, it's.
Oh, that's, yeah.
It's, it's what grandpa did.
Yeah, so. But the pressure is on, I mean, if, if you're in a family and you got six siblings and it gets passed down to you, you know? One can't buy the rest out of the farmer, there's just no looking. And so inevitably it gets split up and sold, and if you're gonna sell, you're gonna sell, it develops prices, you'd be stupid not to, right?
Right.
So, um, it, it creates a challenge. And that creates a whole nother challenge, because then you have historic water flows and now you need to go elsewhere. You know, our valley floor typically would flood irrigate most of our valley floors and, and that helps recharge our water aquifers, and so. It's a whole thing when you start removing those, um, some of those agricultural operations and it changes the valley's substantial. And the government.
Well, like you're reading, and it's all the county's front, we're run by developers.
But we have to allow the developer to develop, aren't we?
But I think that goes back to, um, she said about, here's our playbook, are you willing to play? And holding the developer saying, this is what we want, are you willing to play ball? Or, you know, again, it comes back to that risk, right now, our playbook, you're talking.
Thought we were doing that.
Yeah.
But if the Arizona's all of a sudden, well, we're, uh, with our backs against the wall, right, we'll see.
And that's where I think the general plan and cleaning up our zoning and those kind of things. And that's kind of like our training with Craig, he goes, you wrote the zone. We need the zone. So that goes back to, do we need to fix our zone, we fix the general plan, so it says, so we are kind of where, this is what we're expecting, if you're not willing to do it.
So that you legally can't say no. So that you legally can't say no.
And historically, our zoning was set up.
Because like Craig said, the legislative, we can say no with no reason, but administrative.
It passes through planning. Right, so there's.
Well, those development agreements are not check the box, they're.
No, and that's, I just meant, so at.
It's a contract, so there is.
But I guess what I'm saying was, at the admin, at the legislative, so when somebody wants to rezone.
You went there, right?
No, I was sick.
It was. It didn't feel like that. It felt like, we need the zone.
You talked about the last.
You tell us, no, we'll see. They've been told, and so we were like, oh, wow.
It's more of a negotiation that you have the power there. Okay, you want townhomes, well, we'll give you additional density in one area, and you give a single family in.
But that was kind of how the conversation started, and then it makes me, it just turned, it was like, we need the zone, we're doing what we want. Or, it's kind of, it's a whole other thing.
Yeah, it was.
But it turned back.
It did, and it, it makes some pretty good twists and turns, it was quite. But I, I think that's where, when you look at the general plan, when you look at our zone, I think we have a lot of work that we got to clean up to make it stronger. So that it is effective, so that we can't direct the, the developers, the best we want to work on. But we're, we're not run by the developers, and that's the comment we get, is that we're run by the developers, that's it.
And in some ways, we are.
Correct, but then you go to Craig's training, Craig is like, you wrote, not us specifically, but the county wrote the legislation. You wrote the zone, you wrote the ordinance, you can't have it. You have to follow it, so if you don't like it, change it. But I think, and I think that's what this, you know, getting general plan, like, Arizona, other things that, you know, I, I look at.
So yeah, zoning needs to be on.
I, yeah, I'm hearing that a piece of the zoning of like, you guys are in a position, I can't, so I'm wrapping up, Kate, I promise. Um, it's, yeah, what I'm hearing you say is that it's, it's a county's in positions where there's been some, some zoning in place that is not getting you guys what you ultimately want. Because if the county's like, yeah, you know what, we are gonna go after these eight thousand square foot lots, right? Like, we want this kind of zoning, then, then yes, there's that piece, you're gonna wanna get with the zoning to reflect that, so. Yeah, okay, I can't, it went by so fast, thank you, um, feel free to reach out to me directly, Josh, we'll be in contact throughout this process, this one. And thank you for the ideas on the public outreach, that is, that's the, like, the best way to get the message out there, so, um, I'll be in touch with you guys once we get the, the banners and stuff situated.
Do you want to let Melvin through some?
Yes, um, there's this stakeholder questionnaire, if you guys didn't fill it out, then just, and if there's, if, don't feel like you have to answer every single question, right? Just the ones you're like, oh my gosh, I have like, just kind of those, I have something that I want to share, do not like spend a gazillion hours on it, just get it filled out. Um, what you can, and then you can email back to the Morgan County of planningoutpost.com, and we'll get it that way, and then, um.
Not just for commissioners?
I was gonna say, planning.
Citizens, if you want to.
And if you have, yeah, if you have certain, absolutely can share that, planning commissioners, um, staff, sometimes directors can give them, that I wouldn't otherwise have. Um, so if we can help you take that to the program, yeah, it's what to do. Oh, as a separate thing?
I convert it to Word if you want to send it to them.
Okay.
I'll send it to the commissioners.
Cool.
So.
Jeremy posted on the website.
So you don't want to have. Question for you.
Yes.
If possible, so do you, do you want that, do you want that questionnaire sent out to the public?
We can, yeah.
Put on our website or something?
We, we can absolutely send it out as, um, as a public document, and I can post it to the branch of Austin too, and then we can help get it distributed.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Well, awesome, thanks so much, I really appreciate your time, and thanks for letting me go over, thanks Kate. Yeah. Say all night, oh, so many.
Oh, I don't. Feasibility. Everybody online, can you speak?
Yeah, Test, Test, can you hear me?
Yeah, I, I see you.
Okay. No, no voice over.
Hello, no.
There you go.
Sweet.
Party on.
Are you running this one, or?
I'll be, uh, I'll be happy.
Yeah, they.
I didn't know how that was. Fun, so.
So they asked us for three specific things, and that was, um, the Mountain Green specific mileage, the UDOT costs, um, up in, um, Snow Bay scenario. And the county's drainage something, something. And the only thing I could find or get back was the Mountain Green mileage. So UDOT, I asked them for their analysis of cost for plowing up there, and they never responded, and then I asked. For, I think I asked you Mike, when I couldn't get a response, and you thought. He, yeah. He's been on vacation. And he didn't respond to it today with all the other messages, so let me text him.
Do you mind if I ask who you reached out to, like, maybe just ask who that to.
Uh, that would have been Ryan Halverson.
Did, was that an email, Kate?
Uh, it was a text message, that's, it's the easiest way to get ahold of him.
Um, do you want to continue to follow up on that, or do you want us to reach out?
I just want, if they need that data. And that's gonna make a. Difference, I'd like to. I'm re-texting you right now.
Send Brad a message right now. Water system, costs.
When I asked Brett about it, um, in passing in the hall, before he went on vacation, he said it would be hard to determine, because it's. A flat fee per, like, the amount of water, and we wouldn't know how much water is coming off the mountain. So I don't know if that's why he wasn't.
So we'll push him to get something for delivery, so the information that we did get was Brad, we'll give him that information.
Yes. And they responded.
So, Brad, what, tell, why don't you tell us what your thoughts were after you received the information that we, we were able to give you?
Yeah. Yeah, we, um, we, first of all, we appreciate the information, um, I know this can be challenging and trying to find specific data. Um, it, it can be challenging, because budgets aren't that surgical, right? But, uh, the information was enlightening, uh, relative specifically to the Mountain Green cost, so, um. We're trying to balance that, the language of the statute. But, uh, the information was enlightening, uh, relative specifically to the mountain green cost, so, um, we're trying to balance that, the language of the statute relative to level of service. In the surrounding area, and mountain green is a, you know, at least an example of cost, and that cost is higher than the county average across the service area. So, um, we, at, at this stage, we are bringing in that higher cost per road mile. It's, uh, about forty-eight hundred dollars per mile, assuming a cost of about five hundred and sixty thousand in total road cost for snow removal and road maintenance over about twenty-three miles. Um, so that, uh, that brings up that average cost of what the, just the general countywide average is. Um, it's still, you know, quite a bit less when compared to, um, Wasatch Peaks, um, that their cost that they've included in their budget. So there's still a huge difference there, and so, um, you know, some of our challenge is trying to determine, um, what, what is the best assumption relative to that cost per mile, based on that, uh, that language of level of service. Um, but at, at this stage, we have included that higher cost per road mile, and now what we're focusing on is, is, again, if there's any cost we can include for stormwater. Um, what that looks like, we, we contacted the developer, the sponsor, and said, hey, there's questions relative to some of these assumptions on, um, the room rate, for example, and so they gave some feedback, they felt maybe that was aggressive and pulled it down. I think we're assuming five hundred, and they said it, they corrected us and said it should be four hundred dollars per, on average, for nightly room rate.
Way too high. I mean, there's, there's, there's no accommodations within twenty miles that I can think of that would be four hundred dollars a night on a consistent basis. None at all, I mean, our hotel here in town charges a hundred and twenty dollars a night, and that's for a three-star hotel, and even, even Airbnb's where you're renting an entire home are three hundred and fifty dollars a night, not four or five dollars a night. So it's still way overinflated, I believe.
Yeah. So, uh, that's the, the data that I received.
Bryce.
Yeah, go ahead.
I say even Bryce Canyon was only a hundred and twenty, um, and they're a very popular place, so I don't know how Snow Basin or even Mountain Green could collect that kind of rate.
I mean, I think you could get four hundred dollars a night for the week between Christmas and New Year's up there, or, you know, holidays, absolutely, but outside of that, you're not going to get that year round, there's, there's just no way.
And the occupancy rate.
And the occupancy rate, they'll never hit that, not even close.
They were a S V N C out, maybe, but they don't have a S V N C out.
And they won't, because Snow Basin is not interested in doing that with them, in their own project.
Fred, can you help me understand a little bit how this works, um, since this is all new to us? Um, I'm assuming that the developer is the person that hired you to do this, is that correct?
No, the Lieutenant Governor's Office is responsible for, uh, going through the selection consultant, um, at the, uh, the sponsor's request, so it has to follow a certain procedure relative to initiating a feasibility study. Once that is approved by the Lieutenant Governor's Office, then the Lieutenant Governor's Office engages us to.
Is it the state base for the feasibility study then?
Well, uh, yeah, the state covers the initial cost, if the area were to incorporate, then that cost is then passed on to the, to the newly incorporated area.
So are those costs included in their costs here?
Yes.
So one thing you mentioned is, is maybe the difference in cost between what they're spending on Wasatch Peaks and what we spend in Mountain Green. It sounds like you kind of had a question as to why there's a difference, and maybe we can shed a little bit of light on that. Um, a big reason for the cost of, or the difference in cost is elevation. Um, Wasatch Peaks is significantly higher in elevation than most of Mountain Green, so snow levels are different. And the impact of, of freeze and thaw is different than it is in, in most of Mountain Green, but another, I think, big element of that is, is age of infrastructure, you know, I mean, when you build a road, uh, often the most shifting and movement and, and issues you have with that are within the first year to ten years, right? After that, it tends to settle enough that you don't have that problem, and most of our areas in Mountain Green that are on slopes, at least, it's older infrastructure, it's been there for, you know, fifteen, twenty, thirty, forty years, and as such, it's not, it's not moving anymore. Now, Wasatch Peaks is cutting into virgin soil, and so they're having a lot of movement on that hillside, and I suspect that will be the same case. Uh, well, I, I can confirm that would be the same case in the Nine Springs area for two reasons, number one, we've had newer subdivisions placed in Mountain Green in the upper parts of, of Highlands, which are adjacent to the Nine Springs property, that have had settling and sinking, in fact, to the point where, um, we had a couple of houses slide off the mountain several years ago, the county ended up putting the bill for that. And directly above this property on the Snow Basin side, uh, as you're probably well aware, that road has sunk multiple times since they built the new road from Trappers into Snow Basin, so. I think it'd be naive to assume that, well, just because it's not, you know, we haven't seen sinking specifically on this particular piece of property, but we have on both sides of it, that we wouldn't have, potential for that, and so I think that's, that's a big part of it, at least in my mind. Now, the question is, how do you quantify that, and I don't know, I think that the very best available numbers are, are the numbers that Wasatch Peaks is giving you for that. But maybe it's somewhere in between, you know, what it costs us to operate in Mountain Green and what it costs Wasatch Peaks to operate. But certainly, it's, you know.
Yeah, we're, we, I, I don't, uh, you know, I'm, I'm not doubting that necessarily, I'm just saying, we, um, we, we have, you know, our job as a third party is, there's, um, there's comments, right, from the sponsors and from the county. What we look for is the data to say, okay, just give us those costs, right, let, let's, let's get that cost, or what is the data that suggests, um, Nine Springs is like Wasatch Peaks? Um, because we don't have the engineering studies or the data, um, so it becomes a, you know, he said, she said, right, and this is what it should be, and we then have to balance that against what the statute says of saying, look at what is provided as a level of service surrounding that area. Um, and that's what you need to assume in the study, so. We are, we were just hoping, our, our request from the county is, yeah, give us that information so that we can show, yeah, here is the cost to, uh, provide the same, you know, that the county's providing as it relates to a level of service, that we can meet the requirements of the statute and have the data to back that up. Um, it gets a little more difficult when we have another entity who's providing a level of service in a different area, and again, there's a perception that that might not be an apples-to-apples comparison. We have no way to validate that, right, because we're not engineers and we're not doing an engineering study. So, we, we just, we want as much of that data as we can, so if there is an, an expectation of, yes, that's going to cost money, we hope that, uh, the service provider can help us identify those costs, and this is, and that's why we reached out to say, hey, give us the mountain green that was initially said, maybe that's an example of, of an area that might be similar to this area, but the, the numbers didn't come out to be that, as high as that, the Wasatch Peaks, so. Um, we want to avoid the perception that we're just trying to cherry pick data, right, but any data that we can, can receive, we will, we will evaluate and look at, we just, we just have comments relative to that cost, but not necessarily additional data. So, yeah, that, that's what we're hoping relative to the mountain green data, um, that it could provide some additional insight.
So just to make sure I understand, because what I'm hearing is you, you're not wanting to cherry pick data when it comes to road costs, but when it comes to hotel costs and revenues, we're fine to cherry pick data?
No, we're, we're relying on the data that, that, that.
But there's no verification of that data is the problem, I mean, and anybody can do a hotel search and look at, at room rates, and there's plenty of websites out there that'll tell you average rates, so.
Yeah, I mean, we.
I mean, for them to just say, well, this is our cost, I mean, we can do the same thing and tell you, well, our costs are ten thousand dollars a mile in Mountain Green, that's not what we're doing, you know, we're giving you actual costs.
Yeah, I guess the difference is, yeah, I mean, we're dealing with speculation relative to the developers pro forma versus actual levels of service relative to what the county has provided. So yes, there is a difference, and we understand that, and, um, I, I guess the difference is, the statute speaks to that specifically, what is the level of service you're providing, and that is an actuality versus the developers pro forma, which is speculative, I mean, from their perspective, they're saying, hey, we're building something that doesn't exist. So to compare it to the hotel at the, at the mouth of the canyon isn't a, a proper comparison, because we're going to build something that's different. I mean, again, this is the feedback we receive.
Yeah, in what way is it different?
So it becomes challenging for us.
What's different about it?
Yeah, that's.
I mean, what evidence do we have, do we, do we know, why do we have proof our side, but they don't have proof their side, I guess that's what I.
Because the statute speaks to that, that specific element, looking at levels of service and saying, when determining costs, uh, we need to look at those, uh, levels of service that are provided, when we look at revenues, we need to assume, assume the same tax categories and revenue availability, uh, that is, that is currently available. So, we're essentially saying, okay, sales tax revenues are available, but we don't have a property tax, and we're not including the property tax revenue.
But are those, I would argue that those sales tax revenues are not available if you can't command those types of rates and occupancy elsewhere in the county.
Yeah, I guess the way we view it is those tools are available.
What's the draw, what's bringing residents in, or, or visitors in?
What's different about their hotels that's not at the bottom of the table?
Yeah, we're not, we're not doing that study, we're not doing the study of what is different, what's the market saturation, we're not doing any of that, and that's, that is a challenge. Uh, which is why we focus heavily on this cost evaluation, to say, okay, let's, if there are, there are costs here, let's, let's get those buttoned up. Um, that is often a complaint, if that's.
Can I do this because the way just what you.
Yeah, it seems like you got overinflated revenues and under costs that are guesstimated, but it is what it is. So, one other question I have, where LRB has been selected to do this, this study on behalf of the municipality, does that disqualify LRB from being able to do any business with the municipality should it be approved?
Um, I don't think so, I don't, I don't know of any, we'd have to disclose conflicts of interest in any engagement we're involved in. Um, but that exists in everything we do.
And that seems to me like a huge conflict of interest if, if, you know, you say, hey, this is feasible, and then they contract with you to do work after today. That seems like a big conflict of interest to me, but maybe I, maybe I'm wrong.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's why our objective is to comply with the statute, uh, which, that is, that is our sole purpose. Is to say, okay, what does the statute require, um, let's, let's do our best as a third party to evaluate those elements. I mean, it's, it's not enjoyable for me to go through this process, right, you know, I don't, I don't like to do it.
That's not enjoyable for us either.
No, I mean, I, um, you know, the, the, the elements that I think people need to consider is the statute, right, is what, how is it, how, how is it drafted, who drafted the statutes, how do we ensure that the statute protects the process, because there, there are elements relative to, um, self-governance that are important, uh, that, that are fundamental in the, the intent of the statute, but there are elements that, that may need to be reevaluated. And, and in any piece of legislation, there are, there's ambiguity and, uh, uncertainty relative to how you interpret those elements, and those are all the challenges we have to work through. And, yeah, our, our objective is to say, okay, what is the statute telling us to do, what do we think it's telling us to do and comply with that? Because at the end of the day, this is not a fun exercise, it is not fun to go to a public hearing and deal with this, but it is a requirement. Um, so we've recognized this, this issue of, um, and it has come up in several of our studies, um, which is the market feasibility of the proposed development, and, um, how you truly address that. Um, so we, we're contemplating that on our end, uh, relative to some of the assumptions, uh, as it relates to sales tax revenue growth. Um, I mean, the other, the other element is, uh, the, the challenge associated with these types of revenue streams is, it, it all depends on when you pull your data, right? So you could have, if, if study is done, was done two years ago, three years ago, you'd see huge growth in sales tax revenues, but that's starting to decline a little bit, right? So short-term perspective influences, may influence some of those assumptions versus long-term perspective, and again, the statute doesn't speak to any of that, it, it just says evaluate the feasibility, um, based on level of service assumptions and, uh, tax category assumptions, so. It, it puts us in a challenging position, um, ultimately, we've opted to say, hey, this, the statute does not speak to, um, market feasibility, or looking at, um, proving or disproving, uh, those pro formas, um, so we're not stepping into areas that we feel the statute doesn't allow us to step into. Um, and, and that creates some challenges, so. Again, why are we focused on these expenses?
The county has to prove our position, and, and the developer doesn't have to prove theirs, but.
I mean, we, we try to have the same type of flexibility by using comp data and saying, okay, let's look at other municipalities, and what is their cost per road mile, as, as we look specifically at roads. But yes, I mean, it, it does create some challenges because of that reference to levels of service and maintaining that. Um, my, my perspective is that is intended to, again, to, um, ensure that the process doesn't, um, doesn't get skewed if we try to say, hey, this new town has to cover anything and everything that could happen, whereas the, the current service providers don't cover that level of service, where you're funding anything and everything that could happen to a level of service that's an A or Cadillac. I mean, so it's intended to say, hey, there are limitations relative to local government and municipal service provision, and those limitations should be expressed in, in this cost allocation. So, our, we're leaning, we lean towards saying, saying, hey, what, what is the county providing, that's the service provider? Um, how, how can we, how can we look at that level of service to get a cost estimate for this area? In, in, and comply with that element of the statute, and say, okay, this is, this is the service that's provided, so this is what the town has to maintain, but it may not actually represent the true cause.
That brings up a great, a great point, um, because another concern that we had, and we brought it up with the last time we spoke, was regarding the government operations cost that were estimated, and the fact that they were based solely on, uh, a per, a population per, per resident cost. You know, the, the services that the county provides, we, we don't provide those based on a per population cost, obviously, the greater your population, some of those services require more people or, or, um, equipment or whatever to service, but I think that's a big concern I have, you know, you're showing it's going to cost them fifty thousand dollars total for a year to operate a city government, and I would argue that that's honestly laughable, in that, I mean, you couldn't hire one individual to do anything for an entire year for fifty thousand dollars. Yet, the assumption is, well, Morgan County only spends that, well, yeah, per capita, but not, you know, if we had, there's certain services that are, that are fixed costs, is what I'm getting at, I guess, and I don't think that's adequately represented. So have you had a chance to review that again and, and kind of determine how you would calculate that?
Yeah, I mean, um, looking at comparables, Woodra has a population of a hundred and seventy-five, and has a sixty thousand dollar general government expense. I mean, so, uh, Hatch, for example, has a fifty thousand dollar general government expense, their expense is elsewhere in their budget.
How are you doing comparables on one thing and not on others?
We just look at that and say, okay, relative to what the county's providing, what is your level of service, uh, what do other communities look like, it's a way for us to check it, I mean, we're not limiting ourselves.
So we told you we provide a hotel here, a motel, whatever, hotel, and you won't use that as a comparable, so I don't get that.
We're not, I mean, again, we're using the data. We're not, I mean, again, we're using the data from comparable communities to check if the level of service that the county provides is in the ballpark. But ultimately, we're using that level of service that the county provides.
So, but wait a minute. When you say level of service, you compared us to, you said Randolph, correct? Or Woodruff? Sorry, I was confused. Okay, to Woodruff, right? So, does Woodruff provide a library for its residents? Does the city provide a library?
I'd have to check that. Does the...
The answer is no. But does the city provide...
The answer is no.
Multiple park facilities? Does the city provide, I mean, I could go on and on with certain things.
Well, real quick, does the county provide that in a municipal services fund?
What's that?
Does the county provide that in a municipal services fund?
It doesn't matter what's in a municipal services fund or not.
No, yeah, it does, because what are the taxes you utilize to pay for that service?
They're general fund taxes, but the taxes still have to cover some.
And will that tax levy go away if this area were to incorporate?
Yeah.
No, not.
Library is not true, actually.
No, it will not. You do not have a true municipal services fund. So, those services are provided to the county in total. So, those services will remain in the county. So, that is a challenge here. You do not have a municipal services fund where we could say, what are the true municipal services that you are providing to unincorporated areas? Whereas, other counties do have that, and we can make that comparison. So, there are some challenges here, because if that were the case, then this area could take that property tax levy, that is municipal services, and transfer it over to the city, which would be a funding source for this community. You do not do that.
But it's not in this case, which, so that's, I guess, the other argument is, does that mean that they would have a greater tax burden?
So, that service will remain in the county. The service will remain in the county and be provided to this area because they will contribute to the general fund, just like Morgan City does.
Not all services, though. I mean, look, we don't provide fire service through Mountain Green area. They have their own fire district down there, they provide their own services. We wouldn't be providing fire services.
Yes, which is why we isolate that as a cost. We say, okay, this area has a cost. And why we're saying, help us get some of those cost details if those need to be higher. Help us see how that is higher from your level of service. So, we're not, we want that cost, which is why we reached out to say, yes, give us some examples and help us push, you know, change that cost to reflect those comments that you've made.
So, have you reached out to the Mountain Green Fire District to gather that information?
Yes.
You have?
So, Mountain Green Fire District will remain a fire district, right? So, that will not change regardless of incorporation?
Correct, but that area is part of their district. So, the cost to operate that would be, you know, based on, have you included a tax line item for that cost for that area?
The district will continue to provide service regardless, if you incorporate or you don't, that cost exists. We're not talking about developer not developing. We're talking about if they incorporate, does a municipality take on that expense? The answer is no. There will be a cost, but that is a cost borne regardless of incorporation.
See, and maybe this is where I'm getting cross here, but when you do a feasibility study for an area, which has been done twice in Mountain Green, as I understand it, that feasibility study is looking at all costs, not just the cost to operate that city, but what's the tax burden in total on the residents of that area, right? It's going to look at the cost from the fire district. It's going to look at the cost if there's a sewer district, or it's going to look at the county costs on top of this, or the city costs on top of the county costs, et cetera. It sounds like that's not the case in this situation. In this situation, you're saying, you're simply looking at, does the city generate enough revenue to cover its costs? Is that correct?
Yes, does the city generate enough revenue to cover its costs?
So, it's really not a true feasibility study in any way, shape, or form, because you're not taking into account the cost to the actual end taxpayer like you would in a traditional feasibility study.
Can I just quickly say something just about, just the copies of the feasibility studies for Mountain Green that we have, at least the most recent one in 2019, really, I think, has the same language in which what we're pointing to, which is the very final sections for fiscal impacts on other districts or governmental entities. It shows an impact to Morgan County, which is what our feasibility study shows as well. But then it talks about all the other entities. So, Mountain Green Fire District will continue to charge property taxes. So, there's no impact to the Mountain Green Fire District. Same with Lower Basin, Mountain Green Sewer Improvement. So, I don't see anything that's quantified. It's the same principle, which is, it's going to be, it's going to, the cost is going to be incurred regardless of incorporation. So, it's a pass-through in a way, because the property tax will...
Yeah, that's not my point, though. Because in a traditional feasibility study, at least how I've read it, yes, it talks about the impact to the other taxing entities, but ultimately, the feasibility is determined by the tax impact on the residents ultimately. And in this case, what you're saying is, I mean, you're concerned about it having an impact on revenues for the fire district or the county. We realize it's not going to affect our revenues. If anything, it probably affects our revenues to the positive, right? Because you have more taxable value there. But my point is, at the end of the day, there's nothing in here that has any analysis in terms of what it, the actual end result of the cost to a resident who might live within the city. Whereas, the feasibility studies for Mountain Green that have been historically done in any other city that's an existing area and not a make-believe town, those have, ultimately, the feasibility is determined not based on revenue versus expenditure, but based on whether the tax burden to the resident is acceptable or not. Am I wrong there?
Well, I guess I would, again, we'd disagree, because you're saying that those previous studies did more than what they did. They evaluated from the same lens, that they looked at the feasibility of incorporation. So, I think that is the perspective. We're saying, what is the feasibility of incorporation? Does that change the tax burden? So, if it does, if the cost has shifted from the service provider to the city, that's what we're evaluating, not the feasibility of the development in total. It's, we're evaluating the process of preliminary incorporation or, in other sections, the incorporation. And does that change costs?
We're saying two different things, but it's fine.
I just don't know how an existing city can not be feasible without grabbing on.
Well, if you inflate the data, it's easy.
Yeah, but they're supposed to be looking at that.
There's no verification on it.
But the statute doesn't allow them to verify or do so.
Yeah, I mean, the statute is flawed.
Statute is flawed, sure.
Yeah, and so it's like, their hands are tied, because they can only compare certain things.
So, going back to, I think, what our hope is, that original comment of, again, we know the cost should be higher, so let's identify that, right? If there's specific engineering data that we could point to, something to say, hey, the slopes in this area are similar, and all of that topography is the same, the elevation is the same. So, this is truly a great comp. Again, we started that discussion with Mountain Green being potentially that comparable. But it's difficult for us to, again, we want to be able to point to something. On the revenue side, we're pointing to the developer's pro forma, which you can argue is flawed. In this case, we're saying, hey, let's, can we point to something that the county can give us to say, hey, here's the reason why these costs are anticipated to be higher, and it's a level of service provided by the county. We can then say we're complying with statute. We've considered that information, we've received additional data, and it represents a level of service that's provided in this surrounding area. So, by the county, this is what we're going to throw, this is how we're going to adjust that cost. So, we are more than happy to make those adjustments. We just like to point it to something, right? To have something in point.
I think that makes total sense. I would also like you to do the same on the revenue side. I mean, if you're going to calculate costs on a per capita basis, why don't you calculate sales tax revenue on a per square footage or a per resident basis? You know, you could look at Morgan County's tax revenues and say, Morgan County brought in 1.1 million in sales tax revenue. And if you calculate that per capita or per leasable square foot or whatever it may be, you know, I think that's way more accurate than just looking at the pro forma. And I don't see why you couldn't do that. I don't see anything in the statute that would prohibit you from looking at comparable information and not just the pro forma.
Yeah, I guess my perspective is, since we're not developers, and, again, they are saying we're building something that isn't like what you're talking about, then that will...
And I'm telling you that they're building something that isn't like what exists in Morgan County, with the exception of Wasatch Peaks, which is why I would argue that the roadways and the cost to maintain those roadways are not going to be the same. So, you're telling me it's okay for them to say it's something different, but if we say it's something different, it's not? That doesn't jive.
They may bring up something.
Yeah.
I'm just looking, I'm looking at this on your, this is on the income page. And you're saying that this area with affordable housing component put into the plan is going to be higher income than the rest of the county in all? I'm kind of, I'd like to know where those numbers come from, because if they're putting in an affordable housing area, there is no way that they're going to have higher income.
Yeah, we can...
Are you speaking on table 3.7?
Yes.
That comes from, because there's not an area that currently exists, we just pulled from the census tract data. So, we just pulled from census tract data.
That's what I'm saying, is you're pulling from the air. And if, according to their plan, they're going to have an affordable housing area, there is no way they're going to have that kind of income over and above Mountain Green area or Morgan City or the whole county as a whole. We're the highest-paid county in the state. It just doesn't make sense. I'm sorry.
And I know it probably seems like we're arguing and fighting against you, and that's not, that's not the intent. Our biggest concern, honestly, is if this becomes a reality and becomes an incorporated city, we hope to heck that it survives. But if it fails, our concern is it's going to come back on the taxpayers of Morgan County. And we're going to be responsible to maintain and upgrade and deal with roadways that we didn't approve, with infrastructure that isn't ours, with...
Doesn't follow our current code.
Doesn't follow our current code. I mean, we have zero input, and then we're going to have to deal with the aftermath of that. That's our biggest concern, at least mine. And I think most people share that thought. It's really not that we disagree with it. It's not that we don't want this development, it's not that we don't want another city. Like, none of that is actually the truth. The truth is, we're concerned that the numbers are such that they're going to get a city, and then it's going to fail, and then the county has to pick up the tab for that. And I don't think that's fair to the taxpayers of this county. I don't think it's fair to the residents of that new city. I don't think it's fair to anybody involved. And that's ultimately the concern. It's not that we want to fight and argue with you about the numbers or anything. It's got to be realistic. And it feels like it's, well, hey, the developer told us this, so that's real, but the county has to prove it. That, to me, doesn't seem fair to us, to the developer, or to the taxpayers. And I realize you're just following the code. I get that. Perhaps your interpretation of the code could be looked at a little bit, and you might think a little bit about that. Because the impacts and ramifications are big.
Yes, yeah, so, and we appreciate that. Again, if you have, what we're basing it off is, under the statute, it says, assume the same tax categories and tax rate as imposed by the county and all other current service providers at the time during which the feasibility consultant compares the feasibility study. And then the cost, the five-year projected cost of providing municipal services to the proposed preliminary municipality area. It's just later when it talks about when calculating the current cost of municipal services. So, there's a specific element in the statute that calls out cost. Because when evaluating cost, we need to consider the amount of what costs the proposed preliminary municipality area to provide municipal services. And, sorry, when determining costs, those costs should provide a level and quality of municipal services that fairly and reasonably approximate the level and quality of municipal services that are provided to the area surrounding the proposed preliminary municipality area at the time the feasibility consultant conducts the feasibility study. So, I guess the challenge is, it leaves revenues kind of open, but then specifically calls out cost. Says, hey, when you're looking at cost, look at the level of service that's provided in that area, surrounding that area, the municipal services that are provided.
I actually have very little concern with the costs as much as I do the revenues. Because the revenues, to me, are, you know, you're vetting out these costs very detailed. Hey, show us data that proves out the cost.
Well, it's not really that detailed.
But there's no data that proves out the revenues. And you're not looking at any comparable data. You're not looking at any other cities or towns or anything when it comes to the revenues, which seems strange to me. I mean, how do you project tax revenues? What's that?
It's just because it's called out in the statute. It's called out that when determining cost, there is a specific clause related to that.
Yeah, I get that, but because, you're telling me because the revenues aren't specified in any way, shape, or form, you're just taking the developer's work for it? Why can't you take our work for it too? And say, hey, these are actual revenues? The statute doesn't say you can only take their projections in terms of revenue.
We're just trying to comply with that portion of the statute relative to maintaining the same level of service.
I understand that. Let's set aside costs, set aside costs, 100%. Let's stop talking about costs.
But we can, but because of that clause.
You're telling me that revenues, you can take whatever the developer tells you as gospel on revenues. But if the county gives you data that shows that revenues are not the same in the surrounding area, that's invalid.
It's not called out in the statute.
But it's not explicitly removed either. The statute doesn't say, for revenues, you must only take the data given to you by the developer or by the sponsor of the new city. Correct?
Correct.
So, that's just a determination that you have made.
Yeah, we're basing it off what the statute says, which we do.
But the statute doesn't say that. The statute does not say you only take revenues based on what the developer gives you. In fact, the statute is vague towards that. So, my argument is, you're telling me, well, we can't take any other data except what the developer gives us on the revenues. But on expenditures, we have to, right?
Yes, we are saying, we're, again, since we are not a developer, we do take their development performance, I guess.
But wait a minute. Who would know better about tax revenues, a developer or a city or county? Who collects tax revenues? Who levies taxes? A developer or a municipality?
Okay, we're going to...
That's what I'm getting at.
We're going to stop here. And we've given you our requests. And you've indicated at the start of this meeting that you have data to prove that those costs are higher. What we hope is you give us that from the county's level of service. Say, okay, what is the county providing? And give us that cost. We will evaluate those assumptions relative to revenue. But we're, yes, we're not obligated to, the statute is vague relative to how we look at this data. So, we have, we have presented this information, yeah.
Yeah, I get you've presented the information. And I think what Commissioner Newton is getting at is, what is your process of evaluating information where the statute is vague? And so, my understanding...
We're not, I guess our process is, we don't step into that market evaluation because of this very issue, of what we're going through right now.
Well, let me just finish my question if I can before you cut me off. So, what I'm asking is, am I to understand that your evaluation, when the statute is vague, is that the presumption is that everything the developer has given you is accurate? And the county has the burden of rebutting that presumption? But even if we give actual data... has the burden of rebutting that presumption, but even if we give actual data, it may not matter? Have I encapsulated your process?
Ultimately, what we say is we rely on the development pro forma and say there's a risk associated with that in the risk section. Say our process is developed, based on the sponsor, give us that pro forma and what you think's going to happen, what you're proposing to build. And then we say, based on that, is it feasible or not? And then we highlight the risks associated with that assumption.
And so the only impact the county could have is increasing your risk appendix that says, we believe that because of this, all the surrounding hotels, that it's only 150 a night and that would just go, and that it would only be full 55% of the year. That would be an appendix with the risk that they may not get 5, 600 a night or whatever their pro forma shows. Would that be accurate?
Typically where we house that, yes.
So the burden is on us to produce all that evidence and then it shows up as kind of an addendum, not part of the actual report?
It is in the report as the last section.
The last section in the risk section. Okay.
Okay. Well, thank you for your time.
Is there going to be a way we can get the most current updated draft before we submit comment? Or do we assume that the one you've already sent me is the one that we're going to submit comment on?
Yeah, that draft is what your, your, we have that 30 day window to provide comment to the draft report.
Okay, thank you.
And just to confirm, so that the comment has to be in a week from today? Is that correct? On October 14th?
Yes. Yeah, that our, yeah, our, we have to have a final report on October 14th.
So that's when you, so do we need to get any information to you?
Yes.
So that you can incorporate it into your report? What's the, our deadline?
I believe we had requested that information last week. Is that right, Logan? I mean, so we had, yeah, we had hoped to get additional information already. And so we, that puts us in a little bit of a challenging position because we have to finalize that by the 14th, but hopefully by the end of the week, if we can get your, your comments.
Okay, thank you.
Last question. Can you describe what the public hearing process looks like? This is, is that something that LRB puts on? Is that something the Lieutenant Governor does? How does that work?
Lieutenant Governor's Office conducts the public hearing and we present information and address questions.
And do you, do you make adjustments based on the public comment or do you just present it, public makes their comment and then move on? I mean, what, what's the outcome of a public hearing?
Based on my understanding, there are, there are no adjustments made following the final draft and the public hearing.
Where's the public hearing? How that?
The Lieutenant Governor's Office selects a place where.
Within the county?
Within the community, you know, within the community.
I think that's helpful. And, and again, Fred, like, not trying to argue with you. I, I appreciate the work that you guys have done on this. I know it's a lot between you and Logan. You've done a tremendous amount of, of work here. We're just concerned about our residents and our taxpayers.
Yes.
That's why there's some passion involved here.
We, we appreciate the passion. I, I'm okay with the argument. I think it is, it's essential to the process. It's, it is how you instigate change. And so, just so, again, to summarize what we're going to do, we're still going to watch for any additional information. We're making, we're reviewing, again, we're hoping to get something on some stormwater costs. I, I think within your budget, you have, Logan, maybe you can correct me on this, but there's a 30,000 flood mitigation.
Flood control item.
Flood control line item. We weren't sure if that was it, but there are some limitations on that side of, of data relative to flood control expense, but.
That, that is not our stormwater flood control. That's actually an emergency management fund that we use to deal with flood mitigation. It's a countywide thing. It's not specific.
Yeah. I was hoping we could give it some, yeah, stormwater expense, so.
Yeah, we'll, we'll work with our public works director to try to parse that out. One of our challenges, you know, being a small, small public works department, we've got five people in our public works department. So we tend to do a lot of work ourselves. So, you know, when there's stormwater repairs and stuff, it's us down there on track fixing it. It's not, you know, so the costs are a little harder to extract because it's, it's employee costs and fuel costs and equipment costs that it's not like we just paid a contractor. That'd be a whole lot easier if we did. Because we can say, oh, well, it costs us, you know, X amount.
Anything we can get there that is a reflection of, okay, here's a level of service that's provided and we can, we can make some assumptions relative to stormwater cost, we will include that. And then we will, yeah, we'll, we'll definitely have, any, any response that we receive from you, we'll include in the document and our response in, in the risk section. So yes, we will watch for that. Yeah. Anything you can get us, just please send that. And then we'll be shooting for that deliverable on the 14th.
Cool. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thanks, everybody. See ya.
I mean, they gotta look at both, right? If it's gonna be there. Liability insurance. And then I think on the revenue side, there would be a check to just blindly, it doesn't make any sense that we have to prove our expenditure side, but the revenue side, we can make that. That's crazy, you know? When we have good data on that, we could tell them what sales tax revenues are accounted for.
You guys are pointing up to your seats, you know, right?
Yes.
Who doesn't even know for the toys?
I didn't get picked.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I told them I worked with cops all day and they're like, oh, they probably don't want you on trial. I wasn't sad about it. I'm here to deal with it since there's so many parts to this one.
Oh, yes. Thank you.
We need it after that.
I can't be counted.
Okay, welcome everyone. Appreciate your attendance here tonight, October 7th, 2025. Just finished up our three and four PM work sessions. So we'll commence with our meeting, our regular Morgan County Commission meeting now. We'll start with Commissioner Nickerson leading us with an invocation and pledge of allegiance and then we'll move on from there.
Dear Father in heaven, we are grateful for this opportunity we have to meet together as a, as a county body and pray thy spirit dwell with us that we can have good constructive conversation and dialogue. We are so grateful for all the moisture we've received and the lack of destruction to go along with the moisture. We pray that we'll continue to receive moisture throughout the fall and the winter to give us what we are in need of. We're grateful for the opportunity we have to serve the people of Morgan and pray we'll take their thoughts into, into consideration. We're grateful for all the many blessings for those who protect us and watch over us and ask you to bless our first responders and those who put their themselves in harm's way to take care of us. We are so grateful for this beautiful valley in which we live and the residents that live here and the, the beauty which we get to enjoy each day. We love you so very much and we ask these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, consent agenda items. Has anyone got anything that they have an issue with? Are you still with us, Commissioner Fackrell?
Yes.
Okay, if not, I'll look for a motion.
All right, Commissioner, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Nickerson and a second by Commissioner Blocker. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, do we have any conflicts of interest tonight? Okay. All right. Well, then we'll move on to our public comments. Anyone that would have a public comment other than the, the one public, two public hearings we have this evening. Your three minutes is now. If you'd like to come forward, state your name. We'll give you that time now. Okay, seen none. Conflicts of interest. I've already done that. So here we are on F1, our Logan Taggart, Rocky Mountain Power has a presentation for us.
Right. Well, I think we're going to kind of tag team this a little bit here. I'm Logan Taggart. I'm the Regional Business Manager with Rocky Mountain Power assigned to Morgan County. So the interactions with the local government here.
And I'm Richard Bardowski. So I'm a project manager for Rocky Mountain.
And he is the project manager overseeing the project we're going to discuss tonight. So quickly, a few months ago, I came in briefly, gave you an update on the substation upgrade and so forth. And a portion of this is the transmission line. So, and, and I know that's where the questions have kind of come from. So as we kind of progress through this, it, it was brought to our attention in the work session meeting that there was some information shared. And while I do admire Mr. Gardner's storytelling capabilities, there was some concerning information that was shared that we want to clarify and make sure is accurate. So, but briefly, I do want to go through this and just reiterate kind of what we discussed last time as far as the substation upgrade and why this transmission rebuild is necessary. So if you can progress through that, that'd be fantastic. So currently in Mountain Green and Richard, any information that I'm, I'm sharing here that isn't accurate, feel free to kick me and jump in. It's, it's a. that I'm sharing here that isn't accurate, feel free to kick me and jump in. It's an old substation. I think last I heard, we're assuming it's about 40 years old. It's currently approximately a 10 MVA, which is 10 megawatt transformer to support the area, single breaker in there. It's old outdated equipment. Now, the new substation, we're going in with a 30 MVA transformer, so essentially 30 megawatts. A lot bigger transformer. It will have two dedicated circuits in there functioning. One will go north and south. This does offer enhanced reliability as well. Again, we're looking at doing a 10-foot high patterned concrete wall, and we still look in May 26 as the, we need to get it in date, so we can progress to the next one. So just an overview of what that substation covers. So if we're looking at the Mountain Green substation as the triangle there, we have a circuit to the north and a circuit to the south. Now, both of those currently operate on one breaker. So if that breaker operates, the whole, anybody connected in the red fills that. So this will separate that, so we can progress to the next one. So the existing substation, you can see the footprint of it relative to what the new proposed one is that is going to be constructed. Again, there's some, we're increasing the size of the transformer that is going to be there. So with that comes some additional space that's needed as well. And then again, you can see the plan a little bit better in that image there. Any questions on the substation portion?
Have you reached, like, talked to the neighbors and let them know what's going on and all that?
Yeah.
They're happy yet?
I think they're indifferent, but yeah, we've talked to them and just making sure that they have access and around there, causing too much hazards in their daily lives while we're doing construction.
Well, thank you.
And I mean, we understand citing these substations and putting our equipment in places never, I mean, it'd be nice if it wasn't there, right? But unfortunately, that's how we make the lights turn on. So we have to put it where we can put it and where we have property available to put these pieces that are cost effective for our ratepayers. So that was the most cost effective location solution. So part of this is some transmission line work. So you can see here, the red line here up to the yellow triangle. Now, that runs from the Weber substation, the hydro plant that you often pass by in Weber Canyon. The whole section is going to be rebuilt. And so this is necessary in this project because if we're going to a larger transformer, we're going to need more capacity on those lines. Okay, so if we go to the next slide. So I do want to reiterate that this is a transmission line rebuild. It's not a new transmission line. It will be wooden poles. Originally, from the work session that I heard it, it was discussed that we do steel poles. It's not accurate. It is going to be wooden poles. Here's a drawing of the design that is included currently. The existing poles there, we're looking at 55 to 70 feet tall. These new pole heights will be 70 to 90. Now, part of that's buried, right, in the ground when we're looking at the pole height? So a good portion of the pole does get buried into the ground, so.
So what is the pole height thing that we see?
So.
Essentially, the pole height is that minus 10% plus two. So if you got a 70 footer, it's nine foot buried. So you'd have 61 foot exposed. Does that make sense?
Okay. And then the line is currently a 46 KV line, so 46,000 volts in that line. It will continue to operate at 46,000 volts. That is not changing in any of this. Now, our minimum standard at this point, 46 KV, is being phased out, and so we're going to build it to our minimum standard, which is 138. We don't anticipate that being bumped up in the near future. The amount of upgrades that would need to take place in the substation, so the Mountain Green substation, for instance, has a 46 KV transformer in there. We would have to upgrade that transformer if we did go to 138, and it would have a ripple effect. Now, Morgan, our Morgan substation would have to, and likely Morgan City would then have to upgrade their infrastructure as well. So it's not an easy thing to just say, yes, let's bump it to 138, but our specification that we build to minimum at this point is 138.
So I mean, our wildfire standard is on transmission lines, you know, is to build to 138 KV. You know, and that's just for phase spacing, height clearance for most trees, all that kind of stuff. And then it's the sensibility parts, too. We stock a lot more in the 138. You know, it's easier return times on repairs and all that kind of stuff. And then also for raptor safe avian type protection, you know, our 138 standard, it meets all those, you know, avian protection, 46. And because of the phase spacing, again, the spacing from the conductor to, you know, a steel pole or wood pole, you know, basically to ground, that's where we get into those other issues. And so that's why we're phasing out as a company. If anything goes in on a transmission voltage, it's all going to 138 right away or at a minimum there. You know, so we've got higher voltages. But that's kind of the story behind the bump up in the transmission construction standard.
Are you taking into consideration the new off ramp that'll be coming off of 84 in the near future as you build these lines?
So. Yeah, to the best of our ability. You know, it's, we, you know, the information we've got, you know, that's what we're working towards. But I haven't been involved with it from the get-go on this project, but from the design that I've seen and some of the information that's been made available to us, our engineer knows about it. And so we're planning on that.
So we are aware of it, but the necessity to get this line upgraded, we may just have to go in and do what we can at this point and then work with UDOT when that is officially going to be constructed. So. Then we can go to the next one. So let's get into some of the fun parts of this. Like we said, it will go from the Weber substation to the Mountain Green substation. This is four miles? Is that what we're looking at there? Current construction cost of that is 1.15 million per mile. That's not including material, and that's for an overhead rebuild. Now, I did hear a lot of discussion of why don't we just bury it, right? So if we're looking at burying a transmission line, it's not similar to doing your regular distribution. Very, very different. The pole in the picture is an overhead to underground transmission pole. One of those is 750 to 800,000 per pole, and you have to have one on both ends. So in that work session, I did hear 1.6 million thrown around. So that's where we're looking, just to transition to the ground and get it back up here, 1.6 million. We haven't even touched any of the underground stuff at this point. In addition to that, we have pole vaults every thousand feet that are 33 feet by 10 feet in size. So buried into the ground, big, big 100,000 pounds apiece. So very big. Now, we have a current transmission line that is being placed underground in Park City. The cost of that is 14 million a mile right now. So that's why we don't put it underground. We have, in Pacific Corp's territory, we have 17,500 miles of transmission line. So it's not an easy task to underground all of that. If, I mean, if a developer comes in and they want to underground it, we will happily do that and entertain it at their cost for the difference of that. So if, you know, Rulan and Flagship Homes want to underground it, by all means, we'll entertain that, but it will be at their cost. And if they want to pay the 14 million a mile, have at it. But we're not going to place that burden on our ratepayers because we have a responsibility to prudently spend and provide affordable, safe power to our rate base. And going through and doing that and placing that burden on our rate base is not something that we are going to do.
I think if you notice, the newest transmission line we have goes up to Wasatch Peaks, and it's overhead. They weren't about to pay 14 million a mile to bury that one.
And I was a part of that project, too, and they just, yeah, like.
They're like, no.
Yeah, the one, so the one in Park City is a little bit different, you know, it's coming off Boot Hill by the cemetery off of the Kearns. So it might be a little bit high compared to where we're talking here in some of these rural areas. But I mean, you take 15, 20%, you know, that's still the difference. And, you know, it's pretty substantial. I met with, I met with Mr. Gardner at Flagship Homes today and explained all that, and they understood it. So I just want to throw it out there that we have talked to them as well. I met with them at 2:00 today for two hours, and they understand it as well.
So one thing that was also said in that meeting that I'd like to have clarified is, does this transmission line run right through the middle of our city? Right through the middle of that ground that they're developing?
I mean, we've got easements through there, and some of it's prescriptive at this point. Some of them are firm easements. So I mean, we've got a corridor, it's established, people understand it, they know it, they can see it. So I mean, we're just rebuilding back in place of that. And if someone wants to come in and ask us to relocate that, that becomes at their cost as well. They would have to request it, study it, schedule it, all that, and they understand that. But we also do have the obligation and timeline there for our grid, you know, operation to get this back in for the summer peak next year. And so we're working with the developers, like, as they're dropping all of the, you know, we'll drop our line out, they'll come remove all the spoils, get it down to final grades. That way, there's just not ant hills all over the place. So we're looking at those kind of things and coordinating with them. And if we can jog the line a little bit to satisfy them, we'll have to study that design and contract that out with them. But right now, we do have an obligation and a right to build our line back to the current corner where that it is. So, but we are, I don't want to say that that's a, you know, hey, we're here to do this and get out of our way. No, we are working with the landowners and figuring out the best way to do that.
And is anything be able to be built underneath those or not?
No, I mean, so I mean, you've got, you can.
Parts?
Yeah, so I mean, you can do parks, open spaces, you know, trails. You know, you just can't have any tall trees or anything like that or structures that you wouldn't want to put a playground in.
I mean, if we're looking at this, we feel that this is a fair deal for the developer because if we were not rebuilding this line, the developer would have to come in and pay for all of this. And we're working with them saying, hey, we're going to rebuild the line. We have to rebuild the line. Your obligation is to get it to the grade that it needs to be.
It's preference.
Right.
It's just, it's a mutual benefit where they can, we've got, I think, 10 structures, I think is what they were saying, that they would want to get off these hills. And then otherwise, they would have had to pay to do that themselves.
Sure. My thing is just trying to design something around.
And we've been talking with them for months at this point, but nothing ever came to fruition on getting something firmly relocated because there was, you know, having two parties, you know, two developers trying to coordinate together. It's challenging enough.
Oh, really?
So, I mean, it's just, and we've been, I mean, we're going to continue to work with them. We're not trying to be bad neighbors here. We're just, they understand that we have an obligation. And I think part of their obligation, you know, part of their development needs this line to get upgraded regardless before they come online with all their new, their new load coming in. So it's a benefit both ways, I believe. You know, some of them might have other feelings on how mutually beneficial it is, but we're actively working.
And we're running out of time, so we've got to get moving. Any other questions?
I just say, you know, thanks for seeing that. And just to kind of dispel any, because I remember they were talking 138-foot poles, and I think there's a lot of numbers. And I remember, Logan, we met months ago, and we were talking about about a million dollars a mile, but that was for distribution. And I was kind of like, well, yeah, distribution versus transmission and those kind of things.
The difference of a distribution line, I mean, you're talking at most like a six-inch conduit, just run a six-inch conduit and a couple of pole vaults or fiberglass basements. This one on the transmission, you got four eight-inch conduits, two two-inch conduits and a fluidized thermal backfill, you know, concrete backfill in there. The trench is a lot wider, it's a lot deeper. The vaults are four pieces at 33 by 10, you know, stacked four high. They're every bit of 100,000 pounds. It's a substantial difference, right? Yeah, and then the wire size, I mean, you're pulling essentially pipe. You know, it's our biggest cables, a million dollar. Our distribution, that's tough enough to pull, try to go and pull this transmission underground. This is a whole different ballgame.
When we have, when we have an issue with transmission underground, it's not, it's not easy with, like, we can get to with distribution. The cable manufacturers have their own specific people who are certified that have to come and make those repairs and splices. So we had a line in Taylorsville that's buried. It took us six months to get somebody out there and repair it.
Okay, well, it's about a year out. So I mean, the, and that's, we're talking with the developers today. You know, like, even if we said, hey, we're going to jump on it today, we're already past our summer peak. So we would have to do something in the end anyways, and that's rebuilding the line as is. So that, for the loading of the city or the area, that time's come and gone unfortunately for us to be able to underground it before that without having to do something new.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us. And I'm happy to leave my card here with any, all of you. If you have questions, please call us and let us know. We'd love to be involved in some of the discussions as it's going on to make sure that the information that's being shared is accurate.
Thanks.
Mr. Chair, before we move on, we've got a couple representatives of Wasatch Integrated Paste here. I just wanted to recognize them and let them say hello very quickly. So Preston Lee, who is the recent new executive director of the district, four months now, Preston?
Four months on the job.
He already knows it, though, because he's been with the district for 25-plus years before that.
Right.
And Preston happens to be a Morgan County resident, which is awesome.
Love Morgan. We've been here almost 20 years, so yeah, very excited. We just, we're here to listen to the discussion on the diversion and just didn't understand.
We kind of skipped over that because it was in our.
Yep. So we're fine. We're good. I just want to let you guys know that we're here. We're really excited about the diversion incentives. First letters went out to the managers, you know, I guess, what? Yeah, a couple of weeks ago. So it's fantastic. The rollout went well. We're looking forward to it. So, yeah.
So we've got a couple of months now of diversion from our recycling program here.
It takes a little while because it's an average over the year. So as we go, that will continue. But I don't want, you guys got a long, long agenda item here. I'm just here to support you.
We were just grateful for the data, so I wanted to make sure it was included in the packet.
Okay.
I think it's good for the people to see what they're doing and that we're making an impact, that we're recycling them.
Right.
And what a help it is. We're still getting phone calls. Why do I have this blue cam? I do appreciate the data that we can share.
Yeah, I think we're going to do that every month. Yeah, I think we're going to do that every month, um, for as long as you want. Yeah, so whatever you need, Kate.
Quarterly's great.
All right, thank you.
Really quickly, Colette.
Colette West is our sustainability specialist, so.
Welcome to the county, appreciate you being here, thanks, guys.
Thanks for bringing that to our attention, Mike, appreciate it. Okay, Jeremy Sorensen.
So I'm Jeremy Sorensen, I'm with Mountain Green Sewer Improvement District. My chairman, Bill Coots, was going to be there also, but he had an unexpected emergency, so he was not able to.
Is he the one that landed a plane on the highway?
It was not him, but it may or may not have been his.
I'm aware. Just a day in Morgan, y'all.
So a few months ago, we were approached, we own the property next to Kent Smith Park. And so we've just been working together with Kate and Commissioner Blocker, sorry, Manager Becker and Commissioner, to be able to get this accomplished. And so we were just asked to be put on the agenda tonight so we could discuss it further.
So the overview that was the first page in your packet on this, that's what Janet did after reviewing it. So those are her notes, I don't know if Garrett wants to speak to them.
I support them. They're good notes.
Yeah.
Janet did a great job.
Are they the best?
They're, they're the best notes ever written.
Yes. So is there anything from the existing draft that we need to modify, given that?
Well, I think it's, it's a discussion point on some of the
Okay.
questions or, or the things that Janet pointed out as, as far as. I, I think the biggest concern would be the one-year cancellation. So coming down from a thirty year to a twenty, and then if either party can give notice of cancellation within a year, any improvements that are done? I think that that's the biggest risk with the updated agreement.
For sure, yeah.
If we're going to invest half a million dollars in property and then.
Is that something you're amenable to is a longer window for cancellation?
So we can talk about it.
Right.
Uh, the only reason we have it is in case we have an emergency on sewerwise where we're going to have to expand. Because just like everyone else, there's only so much land in the area and.
Flatland, yes.
Yes. And so, well, it'd be, we have to be at the bottom. Not very often are we at the top of a system.
So what's the chances of a, of an emergency so great that we only have a year's notice?
That's going to depend, that'll mainly be a legislative legal issue. So that's the only way I see that. The only reason we did the current planned upgrade that we're doing is because we were exceeding phosphorus levels into the Weber River, which was a legislative thing that came down. Otherwise, we would have still been operating with ponds and lagoons and not had to spend thirty million dollars.
So if the legislature gives you another unfunded mandate, you may need to.
Yeah, and that's the only thing what is legislative going to do.
And I don't know that this would be put in the agreement, but I would, I would suspect that if you had a need for an expansion and didn't need all the entire acreage, you'd be amenable to working with us and saying, hey, we just need this area or whatever.
Correct.
Work that out.
Yup.
I don't know if that's something we need to put in the verbiage or something, or.
And that's the number one thing, we're looking at this as a way to work with the county and also get back to the community.
And we appreciate it.
We really do, yeah, we really do.
And that road's dangerous.
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
Go ahead, Blaine.
Uh, my question is, after the twenty years, there is no clause in there that allows us to potentially consider going further after the twenty years. It's an automatic, it's over with. So is there something we can do in there? Because after spending five hundred plus thousand dollars, after twenty years, I think it would be nice if we can renegotiate that, this or some kind of lease with this if you guys do not need it at that point.
And I'm pretty certain that we'd be willing to put a thing in the clause that says five years before that we can work something out at that time.
Okay.
And, and as far as the cost, I would like to just have the full cost versus, versus depending on whether or not you use it for an educational program. Just leave it at that cost.
Yeah, we were just putting that so you guys knew what we were doing with the funds to be above board.
Okay.
Seems like a good use of the funds, I like that idea.
Well.
Smell.
Yeah, we're big. Fear is that we're going to have a lot of development coming around us and then you've all seen it, people come in after the fact and then go, oh, you guys got to do something. So we want to make sure the public is aware what they're moving into. I grew up on a farm, so I understand what you're saying.
Anything else?
No, I.
No?
I don't.
No, we appreciate you working with us.
Yeah, for sure.
I'm just glad to see it moving forward.
So that was the question one of my board members had is, when would you guys be wanting to move forward with this?
Yesterday.
Tomorrow? Because we're also looking with our current contractor there, and they're going to have to do some grading on the property for us that we'd like to get with you to find out what your needs would be before we do the grading. So we could also save the county residents money on that, since they're automatically going to have to do it.
That sounds wonderful, even better news.
Now, it's going to be taller than the other park.
Right.
So.
So as far as updating the agreement, if we had in there, you, you want to continue the one-year termination just by giving notice, by giving notice? Can we limit it to emergency expansion or like some language that talks about?
I think that's kind of some sort of an emergency.
So, so emergency and do you think board would be opposed to having something that says, keeping in mind the lowest impact to the area of improvement? And so like if there is an expansion, maybe it goes in, you know, maybe at least the improved areas. And I can draft some of that language.
Right.
But you think the board would be okay with something?
Yeah, we will try to.
We'll take it back, but.
Little room as we can.
Okay.
And then we can plan accordingly, you know?
Yeah.
Our facilities that we.
Right. And maybe if, if there was some discussion of if you were to expand, what's the most likely? So that the areas we improve are furthest away? And maybe there's that discussion that can take place. Janet had put in a potential reimbursement type clause that says if it does take over the whole thing, could there be a depreciated value of improvements? Let's say that the improvements go in and it's the five hundred fifty thousand and then the next year it's gone. Like, is there some way that says the depreciated value if there, if it does come in, we have some?
They have not discussed that at all, this is the first I'm hearing of that.
Okay. Does the commission want us to draft some language to that effect that would protect the county's investment or?
I think with careful planning, we can probably mitigate that.
Mitigate it as much as possible. And I mean, the truth is, if you're twenty years out, by then the infrastructure we put is probably going to be
Outdated.
outdated and old.
And that's the depreciation, so I think it's like if we put it in next year and then the next year they say we're out, it'd be a lot more impact on the county than twenty years out.
Twenty years out.
Eighteen years out or whatever.
Yeah, we can discuss it, I, I would think.
They're going to come to us and ask us for money.
I mean, we did get them six hundred thousand in funding, but.
I would hope that there would be some.
I think they'd work with us.
Yeah, we can kind of work back. I, I guess my worry would be, um, the commission will change, the board will change. And so at least if we have something in the framework.
Of us are hoping to have been retired by then.
Yeah.
I was going to say, when they were in here asking for money, they were talking like this was, this expansion was going to last for
A very long time.
Long time, not.
I think application, you know, just different applications and legislation, like they said, it, it can change things quicker too. So I, I think we're not anticipating an emergency, it's just if something came, you want to have a way to do what you do and we want to mitigate some of that risk. So maybe what I'll.
Nice having that property right now for our contractor to be able to do their groundwork and storage facilities for things, so.
So maybe what I can do is I can draft some language and just see if it's something that you're comfortable with on that. I think the option to renew, we can just add on something where it can continue unless we give notice after that term. That might, okay, yeah, those were the main things.
So now the process is you'll update the contract and we'll approve?
Yeah. And, and maybe we can send some draft language.
Send a draft to us.
So that they can see if they're comfortable with it and then we bring it back after the draft, does that sound?
Positive is we have three commission meetings this month, yeah, so.
Well, my next meeting is November fourth.
So we will have two more meetings between now and then. Okay.
Yay.
So maybe on November eighteenth, if all things go well, we'll be back here.
Okay. Awesome, thank you so much.
Any other questions?
No, thanks, Jeremy.
Thank you all.
And thanks for coming up and sticking around the county this late in the evening too.
Brett?
So the commission in the last commission meeting approved out of the FY twenty-five budget to pay off forty thousand some dollars on a, I don't know if it was a leased or financed vehicle for, um, public works. And in that Brett asked, um, if that meant he could order his snowplow? And I was like, I don't, I don't know about a snowplow. And it was not as a request in the FY twenty-twenty-six budget year. So this is his request before you, so this is a request for the FY twenty-twenty-six budget year. I will tell you when Leslie and I were finalizing numbers on Monday, I, would this come out of Fund Twenty?
Yeah.
So Fund Twenty had a pretty hefty short, um, pretty hefty amount that we hadn't spent all of it or budgeted to spend all of it. And so we are having to designate, um, sorry, we send a lot of emails. A hundred and eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty thou, a hundred and, one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty into that fund is, so our anticipated revenues for the year are a million, but our expenses were only eight hundred and change. So there was a hundred and eighty-seven, seven fifty that in order to make Fund Twenty balance, we have to put it somewhere. So whether that's, uh, this plow truck and then the rest of it goes into highway projects, what, what have you? Because we can't per audit just automatically assign it to go into the fund balance. So just to give you context on where the money would come from if this was approved.
So this wouldn't, this wouldn't come from fleet then? You're not planning on taking funds that we had in?
No, this would come from three hundred from, from the twenty fund, yeah. And that's, and that's what you can do with some of this money, just to give you a little history on what's happened. I, I did, it's funny that some of the documents that I was, you know, to save from the fire. Back in, uh, back in two thousand and one, they bought those two old Volvo trucks with the same fund to try to help to get ready for the Olympics, just to give you an idea of what they was thinking. So they, somehow they give a little more money in B and C funds to buy two plow trucks, the ones that we, one of them burned up and one of them wore out, but anyway. So it's, this is normal to do this kind of stuff for, for, for plow trucks and equipment for, for B and C work, so. And the reason I come at this time of year is just see how my paving went and how we, how we did. We, I think we did a good job and come under budget on, on what we did. We got everything done that we was planning on, ended up getting a deep crack. Finished up and everything went better than we even estimated, so that's part of the reason. One of my ideas was to pay off one of the trucks, there's two of the newest, or the, or two of the trucks we have leases on, we owe about eighty thousand apiece on them. So we could take and pay that off and then redo a lease on this new bobtail truck, was one of my ideas. But it sounds like we are adding more money to it, so there's, there's even more money in there than I anticipated. So there's a couple of different ways we can go. But it does take a while to get one of these trucks in, so we have to order it. It'll take at least three months to get it, so. That's really my main focus today, if it's possible to do that, we can pay one of them off and redo. It wouldn't, it wouldn't raise the budget at all. We would match the fleet budget next year and just, uh, make it fit.
So if you, if you pay it off, you'd be doing a lease on the new truck?
Just like we have.
The other option was to buy it outright?
With the extra money that we know about is coming in now, which is good news, so. Two different options there, the biggest thing is whichever way we're going to finance it or pay part of it or pay one off and do the lease, then, um, I still need to order the truck and get something on its way if that's what we're going to decide to do.
Then are we expecting to sell a, a truck as well or are you going to keep?
I had one, yeah.
This is a bobtail?
It's a bobtail, yeah. You and I did what we, we haven't bought anything since the fire, since we, since we did get newer trucks. We bought three newer trucks, we bought two, two within a short period of time, next year I bought one new. And we bought three used trucks. So to give you an idea what we have on big plow trucks, we have, um, two, uh, used bobtails we got from Salt Lake County that are in fair shape, not as good as I'd like, but in fair shape from them, that are two thousand thirteen.
Do you remember?
What do we, what?
What are the years on those?
Two thousand thirteens. And we paid fifty-three thousand apiece, I do remember that. And then we bought a two thousand and six, that the orange truck, if you see it around, it's a ten wheeler. We have three ten waders and two bobtails. We bought a two thousand and six from Wasatch County. When they, when they loaned us those trucks, that was one of the trucks they loaned us and we've, we drove it for a while, thought it was a pretty good truck. And we bought, we paid forty thousand for that. And, uh, the new trucks, uh, we've got a two thousand and twenty, I think is the one John drives, it's a big international truck. We give, I think that was about two hundred and ten thousand, we bought that on lease. I think that's the first one that'd be paid off, so we owe about eighty thousand on that. The next one is a two thousand and one that I drive quite a bit, it's a Mac. Uh, we paid two thou, uh, two hundred and eight thousand for that truck. And, um, the one that Justin drives, that all-wheel-drive bobtail truck that goes in the Highlands and the steep roads, we paid two hundred and fourteen thousand for that, that's a two thousand and twenty-two, so just to give you the idea of the trucks that we have. So this would add one for me.
So Brett, on that math of what we hadn't budgeted versus what this would cost? We're sixty-three thousand, eight fifty-two, fifty-two short, would that still come out of Class B road funds of what's already budgeted?
Yeah, well, there, there's two hundred and fifty-five in there right now. And I've got about, um.
That's budgeted?
Not budgeted, sorry, that's in, that's in there right now.
You're talking fund balance?
Fund balance in road, yeah.
So you'd want to pull the rest out of fund balance?
Out of.
Out of B and C fund?
Out of B and C funds, yeah.
I thought that was only two hundred, hold on.
So you're saying to take it out of the tax, that sales tax is what you're asking for?
No, it's gas, gas money, gas tax.
Yes, the B and C, the B and C funds.
Okay.
Yeah, there's just the two hundred thousand we leave in reserve.
Oh, the two hundred, you're talking about the, there's two hundred and fifty-five in my regular three hundred account, that's what I'm talking about, we use that.
And your three hundred, with a fleet account?
In B and C, the three, three hundred. Twenty dash four four zero zero dash three hundred.
Your highway projects line?
Yeah, highway projects, yeah.
For FY twenty-six or FY twenty-five?
Twenty-five.
Okay, so you're anticipating a rollover from FY twenty-five to twenty-six?
That's the reason I'm going to entertain in this idea is from that fund rather.
Okay.
And the anticipation is two hundred thousand rolling over?
Two forty-two seven fifty.
So besides the re, y- you're talking about the two hundred reserve and then plus I have this three hundred account, that's
Okay.
Two fifty-five, but I, I anticipate uh needing about sixty thousand for that, for just little things like I've got some collars.
Salt and finish up the rest of the year.
Can you confirm that, Kate?
Can I confirm?
Well, that's not what it says there, right?
So this is saying that at the end of the year, if he's on, if he spends what he thinks he's going to spend, we will roll two hundred and forty-two thousand seven fifty into fund balance. So what he's asking for essentially is sixty-four thousand dollars out of that to stay in FY twenty-six budget. So he'll roll two forty-two seven fifty into the existing two hundred thousand. So at the end of FY twenty-five, in theory, um he'd have four hundred, four forty-two seven fifty in that account. But we'd have to pull sixty-three eight fifty-two fifty-two to budget for the purchase of the truck outright.
So can we do that this year with the twenty-five instead of rolling it over? And put the sixty-three thousand or whatever into it?
I did do it in twenty-five if we could, if I get the truck ordered, but.
I mean, it's the same end result, right? Whether it rolls or doesn't, it's just less will roll if you do it now. I mean, you're probably going to have to put a down payment when you order any.
Right, yeah.
They would be making us for whatever reason.
And I can't, yeah, I won't, I won't run, I won't run that down to zero.
But either way, because this is a restricted fund, it's going to roll, whatever's left over is going to roll. Whether you spend it now or later.
What you're talking, what they're talking about is you would pay the full amount two fifty-one six oh two five two in FY twenty-five out of your three hundred fund?
Well, um if, if we can use some of the reserve on that too, because I can't run that down. I probably have about sixty thousand dollars worth of um collars and stuff that we still have to do on roads. That always comes later. It's hard, they're still working on that. All the paving's done, chipping's done, shouldering's done. Just have some collar work that we still have to do, so there is some.
So you'd still need to take it from both accounts. So what, what was the one that you were voting for?
One's fund balance and one is his highway fund.
But the, no, the one that um that you and Leslie gone over and there was.
So that's the total, so we anticipated an FY um twenty-six to bring in a million dollars. But the, we didn't budget a million dollars in expenses. We only budgeted eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars in expenses.
So that is where the two forty-two comes in.
It's there. So that's where the one eighty-seven seven fif- yeah. The two forty-two is what's left over in theory if he doesn't spend it at the end of um
Current?
Current, yeah. Twenty forty-four three hundred.
So either way, you got to take it.
Yeah, but we still have to add, like I say, about sixty thousand to that, just guessing. We'll have to see how the collars go, but.
So we've got unspent two hundred and fifty-five in that account right now. So what you're saying is let's get it now and if we have to pull from fund balance at the end of FY twenty-five?
Yeah.
To cover it. Guys, good at that?
I, I would rather buy it outright than, than do a, a lease on it. I hate paying interest.
Just need to remember that when I come at the end.
Yeah, it'd be great to do that.
I know. Which just means that at the end of the year, there's a high likelihood you're, I'm going to come before you with a year-end budget adjustment to pull from fund balance and Fund Twenty.
Makes sense.
But I don't want to do it until we know how much we need to pull.
Interest we pay, if we can get away from paying interest. Yeah, on two hundred thousand dollars, that would be a lot of interest. And I also, I mean, we've seen firsthand the effects of allowing our equipment to, to age too far. And if those trucks are twenty thirteen's, they're, they're approaching that age where we need to start replacing. Twenty-year-old truck killed us. I mean, it burned our shed down and.
That year that we, before it burned down, that year I spent a hundred thousand dollars in repairs and it all burned out.
Wow.
Yeah, we don't, we don't want to get to that point. This would be the first thing we, we bought since two, you know, in five years. Be the first thing that we've tried to buy, so.
Okay, so before the motion gets made, I just want to clarify. So we're currently talking about pulling it from FY twenty-twenty-five, Fund Twenty forty-four hundred three hundred line for the two fifty-one six oh two five two in it full. And should there be a shortfall at the end of the FY, we'll pull it from fund balance.
But can you go into the reserve? Because I'm, like I said, I'm going to need about sixty thousand in there just to finish up my little road.
Yeah, that's what she's saying. The reserve is the fund balance, right?
Right, but do you want me to move it now or wait till the end of the year? And see what we actually hear?
So in theory, you're going to need about.
Some, right?
Yeah, you just tell me.
I don't know whether you move it now or wait.
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
Well, the hard part is if he wakes, Kenny's going to be like, I'm paying this bill.
Probably better off to, to move some now and then roll it back, whatever the excess is.
So there's two fifty-five in there right now.
You're going to need about three ten, you know, totals is what my figures are finishing up.
Between the truck and your, your other projects?
Yeah.
So if you rolled fifty thousand or so over sixty thousand?
Sixty. So are you good with me pulling sixty from fund balance?
And the good news about that fund this year, we had a light winter, so I'm ahead, I'm quite a bit ahead on money on salt and fuel.
Fund Twenty.
B and C this year.
B and C road funds.
We get a big winner as the other way.
I, when I talk to Brett, I, I mean, all I care is that he stays in his budget next year, so.
And this would actually bring the budget down, Commissioner, you know what I mean, if you get it this way. Eventually, when, when we pay the trucks off, the, the fleet budget, the, at least the fleet budget would come down somewhere, at least have room to do something else, but.
I still have the issue of I have to put this one eighty-seven seven fifty somewhere. So.
Well, we still should put that in that three hundred then, right?
Yeah.
Oh, well, if you put that in there, then you don't need to move from the fund balance, right?
For twenty-six.
Oh, okay.
Cause every, every fund has to balance.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And he's not asking for an additional one eighty-seven seven fifty, but I have to put it somewhere.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay.
That's just projected revenue.
Correct. Okay, all right. So I will submit a budget adjustment. Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, yes, Blaine.
Again, some of this, some of this amount is because of the paving went, went well. It went well this year. We, we have to estimate everything and try to keep as close as the, as we can. It actually went better than we estimated. So we feel good about what went on this year as far as that goes.
Sorry, yes, Blaine?
So Mike, what, yes, is, are we using any of the funds of the eighteen, nineteen or seventeen funds, whatever it was? Um that were the sales tax monies?
You've already designated that this year.
Okay, so we have decimated it completely?
You, you have not, but.
But we've decimated it to where we cannot add anymore from those funds to help the department out.
Now you could, I think there's still money in there.
I don't think we've decimated it. She said designated, not decimated.
Oh, designated.
Yes.
We'll, we'll be back with our paving project next year for more of that, I hope.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, I will get that budget, I mean, I don't think we need a motion, but I'll get the budget adjustment done if the motion passes.
Okay, so.
Fund's better than anybody.
So the motion is to um to approve the purchase and execution of agreement to purchase a twenty-twenty-six plow truck in the amount of two hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars, six hundred and two with fifty-two cents. The funding to come from the forty-four hundred dash three hundred fund. Um and in addition to this, to transfer sixty thousand from the fund balance from Fund Twenty balance.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Newton and a second by Commissioner Blocker. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Good to see Brett. Katie, do you need me to team see those account numbers?
Honorable Sean Rose?
I, I am just asking uh for approval for an RFP to have a surveyor to come and survey the boundary line between Morgan and Summit County. Um for those of you who don't know or are not aware, there is a piece of property that has, if you look at it, it's always been in Morgan County. But now it, there is Summit County and the, the resident who owns the property is appealing and saying it is in Summit County. Um and so this has gone on for way too long and we, we just, we need to have a survey done. Summit County has provided their survey. Now it's up to Morgan County to provide their survey. So we can verify if it comes back, if it's in Summit County, it is what it is. But I think it's just um, you know, the best interest for Morgan County to have the survey, just so we can verify you know, what, what is going on. And that way, both counties can go to the next step and we can get this taken care of.
How much land is that about?
Um it is let me look. It's point two eight acres. So it's very minimal.
So who's been collecting property tax on it?
Both.
Oh.
Have we actually collected it or just built it?
Uh, we haven't collected last year's credit.
We didn't collect last year's, but we've collected prior years. Um and so.
Is it in green belt?
No.
So Sean, is um, is that all of it? Or is, isn't there one more area in Jeremy Ranch area that has encrypted or has uh come into our county also?
No.
If, if that's the case, we ought to be doing a survey for the whole county line on the Summit County side.
Well, one, we're not made of money and two, the um, the Jeremy Ranch thing, I sent you the documentation where that citizen was incorrect. That was not, is not even close to Morgan County property.
Okay.
So are we going to have to back pay?
What about the Tollgate?
Taxes to someone if this is not our property?
That is a necessary question. I know that there's a five-year.
Clawback.
Clawback that we can. Um but I think that's conversation for after, but there is potential that we may have to, to owe money.
Now, just to, to just like calm you down, it's a barn. It's like, it's a property and it's, and it's um.
Very normal.
Yeah.
Very normal.
However, when you look at what we think our boundary looks like and what they think our boundary looks like, our crow flies a little bit straighter. If you know what I mean. Their crow.
Yeah, that, that doesn't even make sense.
Tend to meander around.
So what, what does this map?
Valuable property.
Is this showing what they're saying the boundary is or?
No, this is what it shows current.
On ours.
On ours, okay.
On ours. And so it to, if.
The blue line is what they're saying it is.
They're saying that's.
No, so if you see Summit County, Morgan County, there's a, it's very little, but it's a red dash line. That's the county line between Summit and Morgan. This is current. What they're saying is it's going, following basically the blue line.
Yeah, that's what I think.
They got it jogging out, yeah.
It just, which doesn't make a whole lot of sense.
Um but there, there's the, that you can't change a, a county line by, by this. It has to go through the Lieutenant Governor's Office. And so, you know, if, if it is in Summit County, then we go into that process. But that, there's just, it's hard to believe that it does jog like that.
So Summit County did this survey already and they said it jogged out?
So Summit County, remind me what year it was. Eighteen?
Thirteen, I believe.
Summit County. Summit County came to um, said, hey, we're going to survey this. We think this is in yours and we think you should survey it too and we just didn't do it. So.
So what, is that their survey where that dotted line is?
We follow our, our survey. We don't, they can't record their surveys on, in our record, so.
They can file it.
They can file it, but I'm not dealing with it.
They can file it, but doesn't mean it.
Have you seen it?
Yeah, yeah, and I can provide them to you all.
Is it similar to ours? Not at all.
That, that, and in fact, there's been multiple surveys from Summit County. There, there's probably three or four of them. Um not one of them match. So it's just, again, two thousand and thirteen, it's been going on for way too long.
Yeah.
Prior recorder has been dealing with it, but it never went further into getting Morgan County doing their survey.
Yeah, I think we ought to get an RFP out.
Um another reason we're doing RFP is we have talked to um, because we do have survey contracts currently with some other um survey companies and both of them kind of felt like, or one of them at least that we would have used, said they, it wasn't worth their time. So. Go last one. Janet has notes.
So a question, is, is this, is this in the Tollgate area? Or is this in the area closer to uh the Jeremy Ranch direction or Bitner Ranch?
This is Pine Meadows.
You know? Okay, so have we looked into the Tollgate ones that we're also carrying over into our county?
I, I. So I don't think we've looked into those. This is, this is just the issue that's come up and.
It's a current appeal.
Yeah.
That we need to clear up.
Well, I'm just worried about have we been collecting taxes and they've been collecting taxes on ones, the two parcels in Tollgate that are actually within Morgan County. So if we're going to do, we better do it for both areas, if that's the case.
To do the whole set, we're looking, I mean, we're looking only a portion of this line. Surveying isn't cheap. The county is going to spend a fortune by doing all of this. We're bringing this to you guys' attention now because it's in an uphill. So we've waited this long. We need to just get this taken care of, then we can go forward into the next, the next issue.
Is you'd be surprised how much research Sean's office can do without us having to write another check?
It's not like surveying a building lot. This is not an easy task.
Correct.
It's a lot of work.
Okay, well, let's focus on this piece then and.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve um posting an RFP to survey the Morgan County Summit line as we've discussed.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Nickerson and a second by Commissioner Newton. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
And because I knew Vaughn would ask, the nine-ton kettle in ranch has not been recorded yet. I don't know if it closed, they were supposed to close at the end of September. Currently Summit County owns two parcels in Morgan County for a total of thirty-seven point one one acres.
What happens to the eleven hundred acres?
Part of the nine-ten?
No, these are different.
So how did they acquire those without?
Because they don't have to, according to the law.
They don't have to?
Nope.
So why did they have to for the nine-ten?
Because it was being, part of the land was being purchased with conservation money. And conservation made them get our permission. They actually don't have to notify us at all until after the sale is done, but it doesn't specify thirty days, thirty years, it just says after. And even on the ones for first and second class counties where they do have to notify before the sale, it's just a notification. It's not a permission.
That's ridiculous. That's a state code that needs to be changed.
I'm working on that.
I don't understand why, number one, a county shouldn't own property in another county, but number two, I don't understand why they wouldn't have to get some type of approval. Cause next thing you know, they're going to be petitioning, oh, let's just change this line here. You know, that's crazy.
At least a change in county lines has to go through the Lieutenant Governor's Office. They're just purchasing county. It's still Morgan County property though.
However, it shifts the tax burden. Now that property is tax exempt.
That's true.
And they're about to get how many thousand acres? So.
A lot.
Yeah. Did you want to speak to your attorney letter, Summit? The letter you had Janet draft or? No, okay.
Unless they want to know.
Okay, we are letting Summit know where we're doing this.
Okay. Okay.
We're, we're trying to play nice and soundbuck?
Thank you.
But Sean is.
Thanks, Sean. Thanks, Sean. Okay, we're, uh, Lydia's item has been taking, taken off, off the agenda.
It wasn't within the twenty four hour notice, so we.
Need to officially postpone it? Mr. Chair, I move that we postpone item number four to our next meeting. Is that sufficient time? Okay, to our next.
We don't know a timeframe.
I wasn't part of the.
I'll postpone it to our next meeting pending the information that we need.
Okay. Have a motion by Commissioner Newton. Second by Commissioner Nickerson. All in favor? Thank you. Chief Boyd Kerrigan.
Good evening, commissioners, Kate. You tasked us with getting some bids to replace the concrete out in front of the station. And we went out and. Had it engineered and put out for bid. We did get, receive two bids. We did put out several others. Uh, those others declined the bid saying they were, it's too late in the season for them to get that done. They had other projects. But we did receive two bids. Did you get those bids? Do you see the one that's lowest?
Yes.
Did you send those out to me?
They're in the packet. They were the little half sheeters.
Page ninety eight and ninety nine of the packet. What did we budget for this, Boyd?
So.
We did. We submitted, it was in the FY twenty six asks.
Are we doing like the apron through? So the apron, including the apron sidewalk driveway? From the road, from the road.
All the way to the road.
All the way to the road.
Well, yeah, I guess it would be the sidewalk too.
Yeah, so building to the road.
Yep.
It is disintegrating pretty badly.
Goodness gracious, I can't believe how much stuff is.
It's expensive, isn't it? Concrete's crazy.
It is crazy.
He's gonna turn the trucks around and take them out the back while they're doing all this work.
So we have, yeah, we luckily, we have doors on both sides, so we're gonna go out the back.
Do you remember what you submitted for?
It was like thirty thousand, yeah, five hundred. That was our initial bid and that was just, hey, what can we do this for? And that come from, uh, the Wilksons Construction. I don't think we're gonna find a very good base under this one.
It's probably on bare dirt.
I think so. It really.
It's only forty years old, right? I mean, I'm assuming it's original to the station.
It is original.
That's if you can find any base on it, might just be a big hole.
So if we've got thirty thousand in the budget, what are we pulling the rest from?
You'd need another twelve thousand?
Wait, no, this was thirty thousand from the FY, so this is one of the FY twenty six budget requests. That the commission and budget meeting said they wanted to pay for in twenty five. There's no money budgeted for this right now.
So all of it was gonna come from fund balance?
Correct.
Just trying to get it done this year.
Trying to get it done.
If we're gonna get it done, we, we gotta hustle.
Yes. Like yesterday.
Yeah.
And there's nothing.
You remember now you're saying we decided we wanted to do that out of this year and not put it in the budget.
Out of the general?
And there's nothing in there.
You budgeted for FY twenty six. You thought this would cost about thirty five.
Who knows how many thousands of dollars.
So, yeah, that's a good point. If they do dig in there and find out that there's nothing good underneath, is that something Brett that we could maybe? Help mitigate instead of it being an extra cost? Like maybe your department could bring in some material?
I'm, I'm just afraid, like you said, it's forty years old. What do we find when we open it up?
A whole lot of nothing. There's no rear.
Well, well, it should be, it should be real compacted.
It is, incredibly.
It just keeps moving.
We've got plenty of landfill from the airport.
Yeah, you don't wanna put the rotor mill underneath.
So yeah, if, if you approve it this year, it would come out of fund balance. Or we can put it back in the FY twenty six.
I think we pull it.
Sure, Boyd would love to hear a motion.
I would.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the fire station driveway replacement, amount of forty two thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, funds to come from the general fund balance. Guess that's it for my motion.
I'll second.
Little motion by Commissioner Newton, a second by Commissioner Blocker. All in favor? Any opposed?
Boyd, I'm gonna put it in this.
Blaine, did I didn't hear from you?
He said I.
I said I. I'm gonna put it in this ten four two two one, two sixty line that you asked for. I'll transfer it into that.
Forty two five, yeah. And, and I guess, do we need to officially award that bid since we did it? We probably should do that. Yeah, so I'll, I'll motion that we approve and award the bid to bidder A. For the driveway replacement, again, for the amount of forty two thousand five hundred dollars.
I'll second that again.
Motion by Commissioner Newton, second by Commissioner Blocker. All in favor? Any opposed?
You heard me, right?
Motion carries again.
We heard you, Blaine.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Boyd?
Yes. Okay, so, um, my next item is when we moved, uh. From Iris Medical, that does our ambulance billing for us, to First Professional Services. We haven't had any companies collecting our, uh, delinquent ambulance billings. So we created an RFP and put it out and we got three submittals. And you've got, and I believe you've gotten them in front of you now, the three submittals, so I'm just looking to make a motion to accept. The proposal.
And Garrett's been reviewing the, because it was ninety three pages worth of contract. Garrett's been reviewing those today.
And so none of them have contract terms necessarily. They're just describing the company. So options A and B, it does show at least that they're registered in Utah. Option A was. In nineteen ninety six, option B nineteen ninety one, option C. The incorporation is not showing up on the state website, but they do have. A DBA that was administratively dissolved in nineteen ninety five and then there's a DBA that's active as of two thousand ten. So. Anyway, that's just kind of more for your information. There's not really a, well, maybe I'll ask. Boyd, do you know if any accounts are typically, like how often are accounts collected in the first twenty one days? Very few. Very few, okay. I don't think you're gonna make up anything on that one. Which is probably why they do it with zero commission if they're collected in the first twenty one days. Anyway, but if they are collected, we wouldn't, they wouldn't collect a commission on that. So a regular account is the one that they are. Calling and, and trying to recover from a legal account as if they file an action and then. For a contingency fee typically, at least for attorneys, you. Some charge between thirty and forty percent. Forty is the most you can on a contingency and then forward accounts are the accounts that are. Coming from another. Basically, if there's another agency involved that have already tried, then, then they'll take fifty percent because they have to pay the other account, so. I don't know if that helps you make your decision, but. That was some of the information I gathered reviewing the documents.
Well, I use the one on here. They, they charged me thirty. I mean, it's, at, at that point, you're just. You're grateful to get.
Anything back, right?
No, so. And I don't know, I could say that it's. They collect some, but. Still, you're gonna have a lot that's not collected, but.
Is your observation, Boyd, that a lot of what we don't collect is out of county folks? Or is it in county as well?
It's both.
And I don't know that we wanna go to this extent, but we do have the ability to, to place. These charges on their property tax bill to collect it. I kinda don't know if I wanna, I don't know. It's hard because a lot of times they're probably not paying it because they, they truly can't afford it. They're in a bad situation, so you hate to kick somebody when they're down.
And I think, uh, the ambulance billing is under a different law. Where it has to be three hundred and sixty five days delinquent before you can actually do anything like that.
Till twenty one days.
Pretty much, yeah.
I, I agree with that. I mean, I. They are, I mean, they're, they're paying their taxes for service. They should pay for their bills as well. They don't have insurance. That's probably because they can't afford it. So that's a, that's a difficult one. I hate to.
I'd, I'd rather leave it in the hands of a collection agency like this and let them do their thing. Yeah, they can be the bad guy and get what they can out of it.
And you still have control.
And if they don't, they don't, right? Ultimately.
Yeah, they'll call you and say, look, this is what they can pay and, and, and I would say, great, you know, if this is what they can pay. That's what we'll take. Personally, that's just me personally.
Cause right now the whole thing's falling on the taxpayer.
Option B shows a lot more detail and clarification than A for sure.
Are you saying in the ninety one pages or the? Or just the sheet, the, the summary sheet?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so basically if, if you're looking at the comparisons. The only thing that any of the options outperform percentage wise, option A would be the twenty one day commission free period. Which is zero percent. Otherwise, they're, they're three percent for regular accounts. Above option A and eighteen percent legal accounts above option A. Same for forward accounts. When you get to option C, they're six percent more than option A on regular accounts. And they're also eighteen percent more than option A on legal accounts and they don't address forwarding accounts at all.
Don't go with that one.
So, so I do think option A is the least. But for the twenty one day, but I, I think as Boyd's saying. If they're gonna pay, they usually pay. There's not gonna be much commission to be gained on, on those types of accounts anyway. Right, like if they were Gold Cross Ambulance Service, right? That would probably be a big deal. But where we just don't have the volume they have, it's not gonna do us a bit of good. So I think option A is gonna buy it the most.
You think that's the best?
The other entities that they listed as being referrals also are, are entities that we work very closely with. I noticed. I think Ogden City and several other. So that gives me some peace of mind, I think that.
Yeah.
Good, yeah, good references.
Okay, I'll look for a motion then.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve, um, to move forward. I guess we're approving to move forward with an agreement. That agreement will come back to us.
I'll have a, an agreement to present next time.
So move that we approve, um, to move forward with an agreement for, um, county. Recovery services for, um, ambulance billing using, um, option A as the bid winner.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Newton and a second by Commissioner Nickerson. All in favor?
Do we need to specify delinquent ambulance or?
Yeah, I'll amend it to specify it's for delinquent ambulance billing services.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, thank you.
Heard me, right?
Chief, do you want to notice the awardees and?
Option A, yes.
Yes.
On both?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, um, good evening and good evening to the county commission. The action item F seven for tonight's agenda. Is for the Whittier subdivision, uh, first plat amendment. I do wanna first highlight that. Um, this is not a legislative item. It is administrative, um, on the agenda to say public hearing, so just wanted to call that out. Uh, the application number for this project is twenty five point zero one five, the applicant being Angelique Reed, who is. President, or present in the audience tonight, Mr. Chair. The application being at approximately three nine two nine north, four thousand west in Peterson. With the parcel numbers and serial numbers identified in your meeting packet tonight. The current zoning for both properties is R one twenty. It's a residential zone. Uh, twenty thousand square foot minimum zone with the acreage of both. Properties combined for tonight's request being one point zero seven acres. And the request is for a lot line adjustment within the Whittier subdivision. The lot line would have moved, would move approximately twelve feet to the north. Uh, which would leave twenty thousand square foot minimum for both lots, even after a, a approval of an amendment tonight. County staff having provided, uh, separate reviews, uh, finds that this meets all of the minimum code requirements. Reviewers consisting of the county engineer, county surveyor, county recorder. Uh, planning staff and the Morgan County Fire Department are having, uh, given reviews, uh, for this, for this application tonight. Uh, the planning commission heard this item on their regularly scheduled meeting for September eleventh of this year. There were no comments made during the, the, the public comment portion of the meeting. And discussion from the planning commission, uh, was minimal. They straight away went to a vote of, to recommend approval to this body. With a, uh, four to zero, uh, yay vote, Chair Maloney astamed, uh, from voting. On that item, Mr. Chair. Otherwise, uh, staff is happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Do we have any questions?
This seemed real cut and dried to me.
Mr. Blaine?
I'm fine.
Okay.
Not on this one. It is, it's listed as a public hearing, but it is an administrative item.
So do we not go into this public hearing?
So we don't need to.
So I move, we approve the Whittier subdivision. Um, number one plat amendment, application number two five dot zero one five. Approximately located at three nine two nine north, four thousand west, within the unincorporated county. Area based on the findings listed in the staff report dated October seventh, twenty twenty five.
I'll second that.
Have a motion by Commissioner Blocker and a second by Commissioner Nickerson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
A few months ago, we received an application for a text amendment from the resident. Uh, property owner and developer, Val Paul. Uh, Val Paul has been working with a sign company, um, Chad with the sign company is in the audience. Um, so for the, most of the presentation, I'm gonna turn it over to him, but, uh, I'm gonna go over. Uh, a little bit about the sign request or the text memo request and then what the planning commission recommendation was. Uh, the request was to allow for an additional freestanding sign along the freeway, I eighty four. Um, currently our code, uh, my interpretation of the code prior to us changing it.
Currently, our code, my interpretation of the code prior to us changing it was that any subdivision that was a commercial subdivision was considered a shopping center based on our code, even though it wasn't clearly defined what a shopping center was. We brought a text amendment to define shopping center about five or six months ago, which was approved. So this would allow shopping centers that have frontage on I eighty-four to have one additional freestanding sign. They were proposing forty feet high. I found the location in our code where it should go. I modified it because they were talking about two linear feet of square footage of sign per tenant based on the frontage on the road. And I switched that to based on the lineal frontage of their buildings on their property, which would reduce the overall size. Planning Commission heard it. There was discussion about illumination. There was discussion about some of the language in the text amendment itself. Ultimately, the Planning Commission recommended approval unanimously that night with Chair Maloney abstaining with eight stipulations that would modify the text. One was that no off-premise signage would be allowed, that the width of the sign be limited to twelve feet wide maximum, that the height, instead of the forty feet, would be reduced to the thirty-five feet, which is the height limit for buildings in all of our zones, that the setback be five feet from the property line along the freeway frontage to clarify that the shopping center shall have frontage on I eighty-four. So the shopping center itself would have to front onto I eighty-four in order to qualify for the highway signage. To remove some quotation marks in the text, that the illumination for these lights be turned off no later than ten P M. And that the language about proliferation be taken out. The one thing I did notice in the text that we provided, that proliferation language is still there. It does need to be deleted out, and it's in like the first paragraph, so... So with that said, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the text amendment, and I'll turn it over to the applicant so that you can talk to the applicant.
Good evening. My name is Chad Fowers with Rice Inc. Company. Were there any questions immediately?
No.
Okay. I'm not exactly sure what my options are here. Since the Planning Commission meeting last month, September eleventh, we have done a little bit of research in regards to the results or the stipulations in regards to this sign. Originally, the council had approved a twelve-foot width. For that height of sign at the thirty-five feet, twelve-foot width is very, very restricted. Aesthetically, that's almost nothing. Just to give you an example, the sign for Lee's Marketplace in Mountain Green is nineteen and a half feet wide. So I don't know if it's permissible, but to request possibly adding an additional seven and a half feet to equal the allowance that was given to Lee's Marketplace for that sign. And then also just to clarify that that thirty-five feet be above, be at the grade of the highway on that north side. It drops substantially from the highway, about ten feet. So that would also restrict the overall height or the overall visibility of the sign if we were going from the base grade or instead of the highway. Highway grade.
So why would it need to be higher? I mean, I would think the visibility would be more in your face lower than higher.
I'm just, for the tenants or for the owners of that subdivision, ten feet of that thirty-five feet is being taken up by being below the grade of the highway. So that limits us to put about twenty-five feet between, I believe it was eight tenants. Can you make comments? So just clarifying, I guess, clarification on whether that is gonna allow us to go thirty-five feet above the grade of the highway or thirty-five feet from the grade of the properties.
So you're thinking if it's at the grade of the properties, it'll actually block their view more?
Yeah, it limits what we're allowed to. It takes up about ten feet of that sign that we wouldn't be able to use for visibility.
So you're thinking a sign that's taller, higher, is better?
There's limited visibility for someone driving on the eighty-four. If the business has its sign below the grade, then we don't feel like it's advantageous to have that.
So you're thinking a sign would be below the grade of what?
Of the highway. Because it drops off substantially from the highway down to the level of the businesses.
So in reality, it is gonna be... I was gonna say, in reality, it's less than... I mean, when you put it above the ground or above the freeway, when it comes off the freeway, it will be less than the forty feet or thirty-five feet or whichever it is. Is that correct?
Correct, if you count it from the base of the land.
So the width is limited to twelve feet. What's the height of the sign limited to?
As it stands, I think they approved thirty-five feet. Or they recommended thirty-five.
Isn't that the top of the sign? The full height of the sign is thirty-five feet?
Correct.
And how low does the bottom of the sign go?
That's what... I don't believe that there's clarification in the recommendation on whether that was to the highway or to the ground.
So, a question.
I just, so, I mean, if there was like, I mean, I know the interchange will be there eventually. I could see the attraction to it being there with an off-ramp right there, like, oh, there's a veterinarian. I need emergency for my cat. I can get off right there, but there's really no... Anybody that knows it's there already knows it's there, whether you're driving on the freeway or old highway road. I think, me personally, and I don't know if this is, I mean, just discussion, it's like, it's one of the nice things about Morgan County is I'm not being bound with billboards and signs all the way down the freeway. It's kind of nice. I mean, if I'm searching for something to eat, I Google it. I'm not looking for signs in parking lots. I'm looking for a steakhouse and bam, there they are. If I need a veterinarian, if I need a mechanic, I just Google it. It shows me the map and shows me how to get there. And I think, you know, some of the comments that have come to me is about our billboard. We don't have billboards. We don't have signs. You know, I mean, again, I back, I could see it being advantageous if there was an off-ramp right there and it's like, here, we're right here. Come in here and see it. I just, I don't see the advantage to it, just, you know, out there on the freeway. That's just gonna be my thoughts.
How many billboards do we have?
None in the county, just a couple here in the city.
Or non-billboard county.
I mean, if I may, one thing that I've noticed in that subdivision is that we see from the freeway, Morgan or the Animal Hospital, we see the kitchen, whatever it's called. We see anybody that has any of those signs on their building. We know what they are. I don't know that we need to have more billboards.
So just back to the actual, the limitations they were giving you. So you were saying the base here is twelve feet, and you said you wanted, like, you were wanting to go to like nineteen feet?
Yeah, so just based off of the Lee's Marketplace.
I just wanted to make sure I heard correctly. I have the, I can hear it.
Oh, that's okay.
So you're proposing nineteen feet by thirty-five feet? Or actually forty-five feet, because you're losing about ten feet on the grade.
And this would be, just to clarify, this would be a multi-tenant, single sign, double-sided. So essentially, what that means is that there's individual tenant panels. So going back to the original stipulation of the two feet, two square feet per linear foot of business frontage, I don't think that's necessarily even relevant in this situation just because of the use case of the sign just being a panel.
So are you a business owner there or are you representing the business?
No, I, yeah, I represent the developer. So we've done...
You're the sign company.
Yeah, so we've done multiple signs in that development, the Animal Hospital being one of them and Wildcat Storage being the other. And so we have discussions with Val Paul, who's the developer there, and he's asked me to push this forward, I guess you could say.
So this sign's along Old Highway Road, then?
No.
No, it's on the freeway. It's on the freeway.
But it's not a billboard?
Not a billboard. It's just a big sign by the side of the freeway. A multi-tenant.
It's like the one at Lee's, but put it out on the freeway.
But out there. That's what I was trying to figure out, the location.
I just...
So is it gonna be electronic?
The discussion I...
Will it be electronic?
Allowed for that or not? I don't remember if it was recommended or not. Are you referring to an animated message?
I'm just having a hard time thinking somebody's gonna go, "Oh, Animal Hospital." You know, I've got to take the Peterson exit and come back to the Animal Hospital, you know?
Branding and visibility, obviously, has its perks for repetition, but yeah.
They may be thinking in the future, if that car intersection is closed, shut down, then everyone's coming the other way.
I think if the interchange was done enough, I could see the value to a sign being there.
Right, but they're probably thinking in the future, like, we don't want to move the sign.
Well, they could put it in after.
Once it's all there, it's like, okay, here's what it looks like. Because you're gonna drive two and a half miles down the road to turn around to go get a storage unit. I think everybody knows that it's there. They know it's there. They already know it's there. And so, I mean, I understand the branding and getting your sign out there, and I get that, but I just, you've got eight tenants, and of the ones that we know are there, we all know that they're there, I think. That's, you know, again, if the interchange were there, I could see the value of the sign being right there, but I don't... You gotta go all the way around to come back to it. I just... Me, I just...
Did I cut you off, Blaine?
No, you're okay.
Okay.
So with the "shall," can I ask a clarifying question?
Yeah.
On number four, it says the sign shall provide visibility for businesses within the development that do not share an immediate property line with the Interstate eighty-four. So if I opened a business there, I have a right to be on that sign even if I don't pay for it? Is that how I'm reading that?
Yeah. Tenants of a shopping center typically...
They may, you know, they may lease space or something. I'm just wondering, like, I might go buy a business there and just put a big... Get free billboard space.
No off-premise signage. If you want to reword it, you can reword it.
No, I was just wondering. I'm like, okay, it shall provide visibility. I wonder if we could reword it that, you know, they may... Yeah, I don't know. I'll work on it a little bit, but... But this one does need to go to a public hearing if there's no other questions.
Okay. Any other questions from the commission? Okay, I'll look for motion to go into public hearing.
Commissioner Russell, before you do...
Okay.
Before you do, I did not get the answer. Is it gonna be an electric sign? Or is it gonna be like the ones in the city that are not?
Just lighted, like a lighted sign or is it gonna be an electric sign?
So per, I'll let Josh. Yeah, we don't have a sign application for anything yet. This is just a text amendment to our code.
To allow them to apply for it.
Yeah, well, electric signs are already permitted. There are restrictions in our code, and they have to meet the dark sky. So this wouldn't add...
So it doesn't really matter if it's electric or not?
Yeah, we don't have a specific application for us to review yet.
The only question I have is that you have lights that have to go off at ten o'clock.
No, it's ten o'clock or an hour after the business is closed, whichever is later. That's what our code reads.
But they put in here, what the Planning Commission was requesting, that they would be turned off at ten P M.
Right. Our current code, with regards to the lighted freestanding signs, says that they need to be turned off at ten o'clock or one hour after the business closes, whichever is later. The Planning Commission made a recommendation that these highway freestanding signs, these highway signs be turned off at ten with no...
Just ten o'clock.
Just ten o'clock. Yeah.
That answer your question?
Yeah. Yes, that does.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I move that we move into public hearing.
Second to motion. I have a motion by Commissioner Nickerson and a second by Commissioner Newton. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are now in public...
Aye.
Hearing.
Tina Kelly, Mountain Green. I was the person who spoke in the public hearing at the Planning Commission level, and I had concerns because we were very careful about the sign. We did not want billboards all along the freeway going through Morgan when we created the ordinance years ago. And the reason was public safety. It's a distraction to the eye if you're driving to see those signs. I'm thinking of the corridor from Twilla to Wendover. Think about how many times your eye is drawn away from the road. So we were very careful about designing the sign ordinance, and because the public also did not want that in their view, and I was very concerned. The language that you have tonight is a little bit different than the language that was in the Planning Commission package because of the changes that the Planning Commission recommended. And I was glad to hear Josh talk about the proliferation because they asked that that language be taken out since this actually is increasing signage along the freeway. And in the original, it did say thirty-five feet at grade of the freeway. That's not in here, and that goes to what the applicant was stating. And if this had been redlined so that you could see the changes, it would have been easier. I had a whole bunch of notes because I was having a hard time finding the changes that the Planning Commission asked for. But after Josh talked and looking, I can see that they've been addressed, but it was really hard to find them, find those changes without the red, without them being called out in different lettering or different color. So I do have a concern about a proliferation of signs along the freeway and something that the community, over and over and over again, whenever we did envision Morgan, the Mountain Green app, the viewsheds were very important to them, and they did not want to see that, what was going on in other areas going on here. So I really don't see how, I said this at that hearing, I really don't see how this is going to draw you, how this is going to be good for the businesses because if I'm driving down the canyon or out the canyon, I'm not looking for a storage unit sign. I'm not looking for a vet sign or whatever those commercial businesses are that are in there. I'm looking for a gas station. I'm looking for a restaurant, and those are already delegated on the U dot signs before I get to an exit. And if there were an interchange, when that interchange goes in, those kinds of things might be more important. But I just don't see how it's going to increase business for the businesses. I can see the Wildcat storage signs as I drive past it every day, so... I don't, I'm not sure that seeing it from the freeway is gonna make me want to go there more. I just would rather not see that cluttered up. I understand that the Planning Commission was, had discussion about whether to forward a positive recommendation or not, and they did. But they did put those changes in for a reason. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, I move we adjourn the public hearing and reconvene the public meeting.
Let's second it.
I have a motion by Commissioner Newton and a second by Commissioner Blocker. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are now back in commission meeting. Are there any further discussion by the commission? If not, I'll just look for a...
I guess I'll make just a comment. I don't think that this should be judged on the efficacy of the advertising per se. You know, whether it's effective or not, I think is irrelevant. To me, at least, my bigger concern is the view shed over what the signage looks like or, you know, whether it draws business or doesn't draw business or anything else. That's my only thought.
May I say something too?
Sure.
Eventually, we may need signage along the highway, especially if we're trying to promote businesses within Mountain Green. At this point, I don't foresee, or I don't, until we get that trapper, I mean, our interchange, and I'm not sure that it's necessary at this point, but at a later date it might be. For our tourism, it might be, but not right at this minute. That's just my opinion.
Mr. Blocker, do you have anything you want to share?
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing. Like, once the new interchange goes in, it'd be a better time for that than currently, but that's a cost on the developer to move it twice if they decide to put up a sign on a long highway road. And yeah, I like the views with no signs as well. I understand that growth happens.
Okay. Commissioner Nickerson, do you have anything?
I think I said my thing.
Okay. I'll look for a motion from one of you then.
Mr. Chair, I move that we deny the Highway Signage Code text amendment.
Do we need to listen?
I'm sorry.
Why are we denying it?
Do we need to, do we need to find it?
It's not necessary, but sometimes it's helpful for the applicant to.
Okay, I'll add some, basically to protect our view sheds, what the people have come to enjoy on blocking with signage, and I think that's the biggest one.
I'll still second it.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Nickerson and a second by Commissioner Fackrell. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
I would like to just make a quick, Josh, I appreciate all your work you put into that, you know, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
You know, taking something from a resident, which is something we've asked you to do, and you did a great job, and I really do appreciate the time and effort you put into that, that amendment. So, thank you.
Okay, F9, Kate.
Sorry, just clarification. We didn't, did you vote? We didn't catch it. Oh, I, against a further denial. Yeah, okay.
And you did get mine, right?
Yeah, we got yours. We just didn't hear Commissioner Blocker. So I'm here for Penny. So bear with me. So this is per Resolution 2477 last year that determined our homesteader abatements, who would qualify and not qualify. We've had one, two, three, four, five, five applicants and one that did not apply necessarily for the homesteader credit, but applied for something else. But according to the state code, they automatically qualify as hardship, so we put them under the homesteader application. I'm trying to read her notes here. It says we have, her notes are saying we have to hear this in BOE, the bottom left corner. I don't, we didn't do that last year. But I can see why this would be a BOE item.
That's the case. We probably need to pre-host it, right? Because we didn't post that the BOE was going to be.
Can you do the mic, please? Pretty please? I don't know what that, yeah, I don't know what that means. I do know that Kimberly needs to get the bills out. Okay. Her notes just say, move to county commission BOE meeting slash hearing, assign a resolution number. So it looks like we won't officially approve them until the BOE hearing. But until then.
But we could still talk through it, right?
Yeah.
One of the things that I remember we talked about when we put this homesteader thing in place was perhaps the need to adjust the dollar amount based on inflation. And I don't believe we've done that. Is that, is that correct? We've not made any adjustments, correct? It's still the same, $50,000? That was just last year, wasn't it?
Yeah, we just did it last year. That's why I'm pulling it up.
Adjust a lot, but maybe by 3% or so. I don't know if that's, if that would affect anybody here or not, to be honest. But I just wanted to throw that out there as.
It's close. Like, so 3% would be 1,500 dollars for this person.
That particular one would be within the means.
They still do have another piece of property.
But we did not do that last year.
Well, we just implemented it last year, didn't we? Or was it?
We just implemented it last year, but we did not go and put in any kind of a, an adjustment for inflation or anything like that. It was straight.
Yeah, I don't think we had it in the tax, or in the...
It is not.
So I guess that's something that we could consider. Now, I would suspect to do that, we would have to make an amendment to the, to the resolution, right, to the original, in order to change that from 50,000 to something else.
We're just up, yeah, I would do an amendment or an updated criteria referencing the prior resolution, just so we can track it better.
I think it's something that we should consider doing, you know, each year as some type of an adjustment because, you know.
I mean, you think of the effect it's having on those people, it's gonna be way more than 3%. I mean, just.
Yeah.
So it would actually be the application that would be. Because it doesn't say it in the actual resolution.
The actual resolution doesn't include that specific.
It doesn't include that language. That language is in the application itself.
Okay. So it'd be an adjustment to the application. But I like the idea of maybe doing an amendment to the resolution that clarifies that our intention is to increase that threshold by, you know, 3% or inflation, whichever is greater, or something like that. I don't know. Yeah, so that every year it's like, okay.
Let's look at it.
Let's look at it. Inflation was at, you know, 2% or whatever, I don't know.
So what do you want to do with these applications?
Well, can we do anything with them?
We can't really approve them. We can talk through them though, right? Any questions or concerns?
I thought we could without going to BOE on this one.
Like, we did not do BOE last year. That's why I was like.
If we don't need to do BOE, then I guess we can approve them.
I don't think, according to what Penny told me, according to what Penny told me, is we can approve any of these if we want, or we can disapprove them. And she said the ones in yellow, the ones in yellow, she was gonna recommend using the formula of only the 20% versus the half due. And the others, she recommended do in both. And that's according to what state tax commission told her. So that's what I understand, and we can go ahead and approve this as CR 25 dash, whatever one it will be. Yeah. So we can approve it according to her recommendations if we want, or we can according to the whole chart, or however you want to do it. I mean, I'll give you, I can give you my recommendation, and that is that we do, the ones that are in yellow, that we do the 20%, and the rest of them are the half due plus the 20% is the way.
Garrett is reviewing the statute.
If that was a motion, and provided that Garrett is okay with this proceeding, I would second that motion.
Okay, I can make that after Garrett makes his recommendation. I'll just, I'll just say that's it, and then he can approve whether or not it's correct.
I mean, as he's looking, the only thing, like, when I spoke to Penny, my only concern I brought to her was, are we, if we're making, if we're not holding to the line, we're making,
establishing precedent that we don't follow our guidelines.
And she felt that we could be, but, you know, we could also look at, it's like, we're gonna cap the amount that we'll actually, you know, we could come up with the, that'd be my, my only concern is in the future. She said, we get five or six of these this year, and I'm like, you know, what happens when we get more and more? And we keep, well, you made an adjustment here, and you allowed this one, and have we set precedents? And she, her recommendation was like, well, maybe we figure a cap. We're only, we're only gonna do this much, you know, or something like that. And so that was really the only concern I had with making these, you know.
It's a little bit of variance, but not.
Not a ton, but, but again, that was my only thing, are we setting a precedence that we are? So, other than that, I mean, I think, I think it's a good thing, and I like the people applying for it, and we're such a minimal number. I'm not overly concerned about it, but I also like the lines.
Garrett, from a risk perspective, do you feel like that's acceptable?
And I didn't review that as far as how varied it is. So is it, I mean, how much are we talking? I guess from a risk perspective, I'd always just say, hold to the line so that we don't have to defend if the commission changes their mind next time to say, oh, well, you did it last time, you didn't do it this time. That's more my perspective.
Did I see it wrong, or was there like $1,000? I think it's $500 because it's the 239 plus 261, correct? It's about $500.
The only, the only question that I had for Penny was on JT, applicant JT, the applicant has rental property. That one is going against our policy or our resolution of CR 24 dash 77. So that one is going against that one because they have a rental property. So if you wanted to look at that one, I mean, we could deny them all if we wanted, or we can go ahead and, I mean, so I would like us to go through that, the Homesteaders Act at a later date, not necessarily today, but we can either approve this or not.
I just, the income level, having a rental property was still within that.
Yeah, and I can tell you why. I know the personal situation here. They own a rental property, but it's their, their family that lives in it that doesn't pay rent. So it's not like there's, I think our intent in saying you don't have rental property is that you didn't have additional income from a rental property. It wasn't.
Well, if you look at.
Because if they were getting 1,500 a month, they wouldn't qualify.
Exactly, exactly.
But if you have a rental, and you're still making over 50,000, it's not like you're having, you got a cash cow.
Exactly. And maybe that's something we ought to clarify when we, if we talk about making some adjustments, we can make some clarifications. I think, you know, any good legislation probably has cleanup legislation. So maybe we ought to consider that in the future.
I would like to have that, but I still have that. If I want, if, if we want to go ahead forward with it, my motion still will stand.
So I pulled up the statute, and it's talking about the county legislative body. It doesn't mention the Board of Equalization at all. However, Janet is listening into the meeting because she loves listening to us and provides a lot of insight, and she, she talks about how the statutes say the commission approves the homesteader credit, but the state wants it as the county commission to do it as the BOE. And so I think the statute or the state tax commission wants the county to do it as a BOE. Statute doesn't outline that, but that's, I guess, what the.
So you mean we need to advertise it as we're gonna be a BOE one next meeting? But in theory, we could, we could approve it as, as the commission, and then convene as a BOE and approve it again if we wanted to.
Right.
Because it sounds like there's some urgency in printing.
So, so I think that, I mean, there's nothing in the statute that says you have to do as a BOE, but I know Janet has worked with Janelle and Penny on some of these things, and, and so I think that they're wanting to see it. The state tax commission would like you to do it as the BOE. And like you said, there's nothing that prohibits it from going forward today, and then you can always approve it and satisfy the statute and the tax commission. So I do think as far as the standards go, it would be good to pin them down and then follow that, even though you have discretion to not follow your standards. I think that makes it really difficult for people who are maybe expecting it, or maybe they're not approved because there's a new body. So it's, it's kind of like our discussion with the general plan. Do we want to have, you know, a shall, you know, mandatory general plan so that we bind future commissions, or do we want to have it discretionary so we use our best judgment? The same thing kind of applies here where you have discretion, but I think best case would be to follow your guidelines.
I certainly think we need to clean it up a little bit, make some.
Clean up the guidelines if we don't fully agree with what they currently say. So I guess that being said, I would still second the motion that Commissioner Fackrell made, and maybe Commissioner Fackrell, if you're amenable to it, we could add to that motion that we would like to revisit this in the coming months to make adjustments to the criteria.
I can agree with that. So you can put that in the motion.
You have that motion then?
Yes.
So it was to approve all those that are not highlighted in yellow at the half plus 20, and it was to approve the two highlighted in yellow with just the 20%?
That's correct.
And, and also to revisit the criteria in the next couple of months so that it's clear for next year.
Okay, I have a second by Commissioner, or a first, or a motion, let's go for a motion, by Commissioner Fackrell, and a second by Commissioner Newton. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Kate?
The last one is, I don't know if you wanted to just.
I can, if you want to.
Okay, let me pull up that page because I brought up the resolution.
As we've started the electrical at the fairgrounds, Dave with J&amp;J met with the city and found out that the power lines running on the east side of the fairgrounds along the road to Comal Springs, those are all gonna go underground. And we have a service mounted to one of those poles. So the service needs to go away. The city was hoping to have that done already, and it just hasn't gotten done. So the city would like that service. They said it's going to go away. They're gonna remove those poles. So that's part of it. So we need to relocate that service, but we're putting in a whole new 1,200 amp service at the fairgrounds. So Dave's suggestion is, let's move it now. And the reason for that is we have some of the trenching will already be open, which will save us money from having to dig it again later. The other, and probably the biggest in my mind, is we're ordering all new LED lights for both arenas, and the voltage that will, that it will be changing to, we would have to, if we go with the lights as is, we'll have to change all the drivers in that, in the new LED lights when that service goes away. And so we'll be redoing what we're doing right now on the, on the. And so we'll be redoing what we're doing right now on the, on the light poles. So this is one of those unforeseen, we didn't know, nobody told us that the city was gonna be putting the power underground. And so he's, we had him put together a, basically a change order request to, let's move it now, let's be done with it. Order the lights for the voltage that it will be. Then by the time we get to that point, we'll have all new power, it'll be reran, and everything will be good. So that's where this came from, was when he met with the city to, we're gonna add this 1,200 amps, they said, oh, this is all going away, by the way. So that's what brought us to where we are today.
And we just learned how expensive that was.
Yeah, it's not 14 million a mile, so we're good. This is not transmission, so. And so that, that's why they're coming to us with this request is, nobody had any idea. And again, the city was hoping that it was gonna be done by now, and it's not, so. One thing that it will save us is we'll be removing a, a service, and so that will save us on our monthly bill because we'll have one less meter sitting over there, so that'll, that'll go away. So minimal, but it, it is a savings. And again, having the trenches, I met Dave over there, basically half the trench is already gonna be opened up. We just have to continue it over to the, the announcer booth at the high school rodeo arena. So he's just got another hundred and something feet of trenching and conduit and wire and redo it, so.
So this is a change order?
It's a change order, yeah, one of those unforeseen, like I said, we had no idea, nobody did.
Glad we found out now, though, and not.
It would be extremely frustrating if next year we found out because we would be gutting all the drivers out of those new LED poles and changing them because of the voltage change that's gonna be happening.
And I do want you to expect another change order coming for, because we did, the commission did ask that we make the fairgrounds generator ready, and we're still waiting on that cost as well.
We were hoping to have that, so that we can basically hook up a generator and run the fairgrounds and continue on with the rodeo or whatever we're doing and not be shut down because of power outage, so.
Or use it for emergency situations.
And it'll be a portable generator, it's not one that's stuck at the fairgrounds, we can move it and, and take it where it's needed, whether it's here or there, the library, fire stations, whatever's needed. So he's waiting on material costs from the suppliers, so that's why we don't have that, that number yet. There we are.
I guess our funding would, would be fund balance?
We still have. We have enough in non-departmental.
Oh, okay, then let's do that, from, from this year's non-departmental, so, okay. Mr. Chair, I move.
We don't have anything in the funds, we, we don't have anything in the, the impact funds, regional or, or community parks?
We've already used it all for, like, we've already designated all, and so we wouldn't have enough to add this. We're already having to pull some from fund balance for this project, but that's it. A good question, but yeah, we haven't, we've already designated every penny we have towards this project out of impact fees.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the change order for the Morgan County Fairgrounds electric project. Funds to come from the non-departmental account. The amount of $12,450.
I'll second that.
A motion by Commissioner Newton and a second by Commissioner Nickerson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
Hey, before we get to commissioner comments, I just have a couple of quick questions for next, just a reminder, you have three commission meetings this month. So we have one in two weeks, then we have one directly the next week after, so the 21st and the 28th, because we do not have one the first week of November, so it's October 21, October 28, November 18? Sound right? Okay. In that, is anyone ready to appoint the non-user seat for the airport? Because we've got applicants.
Airport manager?
No applicants for the non-user because we had someone resign. Airport board.
So do we have any names? Yeah, I haven't either.
I, you should have.
I received one.
I saw one, yes, seen.
I saw one.
I know we've got at least one, I'd have to check.
I think I did see one, one job.
I've, I've only seen the one.
We saw one, but there was a problem within that, and I think Garrett's gonna have to look at the law to make sure that, or the code. And being a county employee, I can't, I do not think they can be on an advisory board.
That's not the one I saw.
Well, I'm just seeing, I'm checking my dates, April 1, okay. So yeah, that's the only, so we've only got one, how much longer do we wanna?
I didn't think that that was a thing that if you were.
There's another one.
You don't, I don't, I don't set it up, I can forward it to you.
I had not seen any others than Chris. No. But he's not a non-user.
Isn't he the one that just resigned? That person who resigned the seat? Oh, okay.
That was Brad, or Mike D.
Okay, and then, yep, we do have applicants for airport manager. Well, because they go to HR, but who wants to sit on the hiring? How do you want to do the hiring now that there's a board? So.
Do we have any applications on that?
Yeah, we have three or four. So if, if those sitting on the airport board want to get back to me on that, and Rainley, this has been sitting on my desk forever, but you said at the first meeting in August, something about Senate Bill 91, and none of us can remember what the issue was.
Senate, Senate Bill 91 is actually the one on the sales tax for restaurants. They were going to revise it. So that's all it is, is just to re, you know, they're just gonna dot the i's and cross the t's, and it, we don't have to worry about that one, not SB 91.
So I can take that off my, try to figure out what I'm supposed to look up list.
That's correct.
Okay, cool.
But there was one, you were gonna look into SB 202, that we had to worry about the BOE, or, yeah, the BOE classes for next year.
That's next year.
Yeah, but we have to go through all the courses next year. So you were gonna look that one up.
Yeah, but they haven't posted any classes for us to sign.
That's right, that's right, I'm just, I'm just saying that that was one you were gonna look into to verify.
Okay.
Okay.
So, okey dokey, that's all I have. Let me get back into the agenda. Where's my comments?
Okay, sorry, I'm just sitting here spacing out a little bit. Commissioner Blocker.
I don't have anything.
Okay. Do you want to talk over the mic, Blaine?
I'd rather just wait and give you all the updates if you can have 20 minutes later. No, I'm just kidding.
I didn't get that.
I'll just tell you one, I'll just, you guys just don't like listening to me when I talk on and on, so I will just mention, I will just mention that I attended the meeting last week at the tourism meeting, tur- tourism conference, a very good conference, very, very good conference, and the visitor economy is something that I would like to see pushed in the economic development. And I can give you more details on that, Rainley, later, but it's, it's a very interesting approach to our economic development. So I will get with you on that. And currently I'm attending the One Utah event right now, which has been super good. If we want to go into other kinds of, I'll bring that, that one back to you with some more updates on it, I'm not gonna go into it now. So other than that, that's good for now.
Kate, do you want to give a brief synopsis on the meeting we had on the, on the land up in East Canyon?
Oh, yeah, that's another good point. I just had a meeting actually again with East Canyon, the, the State Parks Director on last Friday, either Friday or Thursday, I had a meeting with him, and the meeting, we talked about how he is very, he's been working with Director Riley with the Division of Wildlife Resources, and he says they are working together very well right now, now that they've gotten everything together, they're working well, if State Parks needs more ground, they're gonna, he says, yeah, we'll give you more ground, it's not a matter of, you know, the biologist, where the biologist was saying, and the whole thing needs to be wildlife and all that kind of stuff, they are now, they're working to meet all those things that you and I went up there for. It was a beautiful drive, and we haven't recorded on this, have we, since that date?
No, we haven't.
Okay, so, so we went up there, they took us on a tour of the area in some four-wheelers, and it, we were able to see the, the land purchase at a different aspect. And that land purchase has been, I mean, the plan for the State Parks is they want to have some rock climbing up there on the cliffs. They want to have an always peak trail through potentially the same one that we went on. And they want to be able to have trails, the NiKo course and campgrounds, they want to have some primitive campgrounds where some people can take and go away from any kind of water, latrines, you know, they've got to have all that. And they want to have the overlook, an overlook for the, for the sage grouse breeding grounds, and they wanted to, they wanted to have a high, a trail up on the top of the peak or going up to the peaks. And so that's something that DWR is willing to work with them on. And Division of Outdoor Recreation is, they're totally involved in wanting to do this for everything that we, we have dreamed of and that we want to do. They are, they're trying to make this place something that we envisioned when we started pushing for this property. It will be very beneficial. We will be having some involvement in the planning, and we will have involvement in even the construction of some of these trails. There will be, the Mormon Trail will be preserved within the state parks. And so that way people can go and walk it or ride it or something like that, whatever they decide. There will be some horseback, backcountry horsemen will be using some of the WMA for that, it will be closed off at certain times of the year. So there, it's all working out with everybody working together right now, and it's very good. Joel Ferry, I talked to him last night on it, that's executive director for DNR, and he says if we ever have a problem, just let him know and he will take care of it. So pretty nice update.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Nickerson?
I went to, attended the Board of Health meeting. They talked about the Seager Memorial Clinic, which is for uninsured youth, so 15 to 26 that are transitioning. This was a big one, the transitioning word, transitioning from being a youth on their parents' insurance to not being on parents' insurance. So they wanted to clarify that. They did vote to move forward with accreditation. And they basically says we will not see a return on our investment for that, but it just says that we're, look how great we are, we're accredited, so that did, it voted forward. Let's see, they did say that the, the majority part of the cost to the accreditation was paid for by a $30,000 grant they already had to help pay for that, so that dropped the cost quite a bit. Measles cases are up, most of them are in the southern part of the state, there is none in Weber, there's none showing up in the wastewater in Weber, which is a really good thing, so, so far Northern Utah's doing, doing pretty good. Flu vaccines are now available at the Weber-Morgan Health Department Ogden. The next one is October 10th at, from 10 to 2 PM, 10 AM to 2 PM in the parking lot, it's 20 bucks. They will be coming up, up here into Morgan two times a month, they didn't have the dates yet, so. They will be coming up here and providing flu shots for people, so that was the big thing.
Commissioner, I don't have anything for this discussion.
Okay. I don't have anything either, so.
I have one last.
Commissioner Royalson? I do too, if you have a moment.
Go ahead.
This is something more for Kate, because she'd be the one to be able to look at, look at that. Tiara Oxier, a representative, basically said, and it goes along with, I think, what Von's saying, he says that the Rural Health Transformation Breakout, which was today, I didn't go to that one, they're talking about grant submissions, they were due yesterday, but she said that they were, and this is for, for the River Trail. So something to do with healthy Utah. Anyway, if, I'll get more information and get, and send it to you or talk to you tomorrow on it, on my way home or on Thursday. And it has to do, has to do with being able to put in a River Trail if we want to, and something that we can look at, that's all I'm asking for, is that we can look at. But the submission that she says we can do for a week, up past yesterday.
Okay, I'm on vacation, starting Thursday. Tomorrow, I had designated, dedicated the majority of it of drafting our Nine Springs LRB response. So I'm, so what I'm hearing is you want me to apply for a grant for a trail?
Well, or just, I just need to know, okay, if it's not gonna cost us much, I've got to get the information. I don't know what it is more than just it's the River Trail, but one that we had discussed a year ago on the riverside of the fairgrounds, if we wanted to try to get that trail started. And if so, I could talk to Lydia, and I can talk to Von or Matt, and you guys can either take care of it or we just plain forget it until another time.
Okay, I do currently have a grant application in for that trail, but I'm not saying I'm opposed to a second grant, like I.
No, if you've already got it in, then that's good.
Oh, it's already, yeah, that needs to be an action item that we vote on before we apply for a grant. So we should have had it on the agenda, but it sounds like we didn't know about it.
Yeah, we didn't know about it, so, but if Kate's already got one on there and she's already applied for it.
I don't have one on this, this Rural Health Transformation Grant, I already have a grant submitted for the River Trail.
Okay.
Just not through them.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll get more information and then we can maybe do it at the next commission or figure out something for a later date.
Okay, but since we're talking about grants, I just wanted to clarify what went down last week. So I got, I had training on Tuesday in Logan, so I did not check my email from about 1:00 until about 4:20, and I had this email from 2:51, and you can see what it says, that I needed to give them our SAM registration number for federal funds, which we gave them, it's public record. But then it came out that, well, no, you have to submit it, and here's all the documentation and all the data that you need to punch in, and to which I did not respond, even though they said it was due that day. I got ahold of Garrett because my, as my text message said, there was, it was never decided in a quorum meeting. So then in the next morning, I got an email requesting our EIN, again, public record, gave them the EIN number, and then I got an email from their assistant saying they were applying for an IFAC grant, here's all the documents, and we need to apply on grants.gov, do we have one? I checked with our treasurer, she stated we did not, so I sent a response saying Morgan County does not have a grants.gov account according to the county treasurer, if we did, it would need approval to use it as an action item in county commission meeting, the next meeting is October 7. That triggered a phone call to the county treasurer. That triggered a phone call to the county treasurer of why don't we have a grants.gov account? And they explained that Kate does the grant filings, which I, I do the bulk of them, but we don't have a grants.gov account. And then the very next thing we saw was that a non-affiliated Morgan County developer applied using our grant number and our EIN number for a grants.gov account, which is connected to our SAM.gov account, which is connected to our county treasurer's social security number, and is passed by county ordinance in order for them to have that SAM.gov account. So that went to our administrator, which is Leslie, to approve that person through our SAM.gov account to have a grants.gov account on our U E I number. So I, I understand what you were told, but this is the facts. And that's why I was just like, this is-
Well, four of us were there, it's not like-
No, 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 I went thousand, I watched the video, but that's, but that's why I was like, I don't know what's going on.
I have no idea either, what.
But a lot of names, your name got thrown under the bus, your name got thrown under the bus, his name got thrown under the bus. And what I thought was slightly funny is if I had just read this and been like, oh, Matt and Blaine said, okay, well, let me just hop on our SAM.gov account and get you this grant. That's just like we did for MGSID, but that was done through a resolution, it was a taxing entity. We had an, an MOU saying that if they misappropriated the money, and, or it was clawed back for whatever reason. Like, there were so much action items and documentation on that. But the fact that this got done through our SAM.gov account, or at least applied, or attempted to apply through our SAM.gov account, that's, that's what had me seen red last week.
I, I have a major issue with somebody going there, I mean, that's-
And granted, our SAM.gov account, our U E I, our SAM, they were asking for our username and password in one of these emails, which I'm not, hello.
So that should never be given, but-
Jeremy would shoot me, but if it's public record, under U E I, under EIN, I have to share.
But I mean, somebody else went on there and represented the county to set up this account. Without, I mean, they have no, do they have a right to go do that?
No.
And that's what I'm saying, is that, them going, applying for this and trying to set up this account as a county representative is, is how I would read that, is they were pretending, I'm the county. And I'm setting this up as the county, and then it goes to Leslie, had she, was like, oh yeah, that's good. Now we have somebody that is not affiliated with the county, that now has an account.
Connected to our SAM.gov account, yeah.
To me, that's a major problem.
But it did not make it past any of those.
Thank goodness, but it's still, they, they, they did the action, they attempted.
I, I hear you, I think my, my point is just-
We follow a process and-
Follow a process for a reason, I know it's a pain in the butt, Blaine, to like, have to, like, come before us and ask for, like, on this trail, like, yep, it wasn't an action item, so we can't really do it, especially if it has committing funds. But this, this whole situation is why we do that. Because it's not one of five's SAM.gov account, it's Morgan County's grant, and it's Morgan County's liability, and Morgan County's in clawback.
That's not, and I don't think that's how any of us heard it.
Nope.
I thought he was applying for a grant that he was going to go get.
Thousand percent, that's exactly how it sounded in the video.
Apply for all the grants you want, is-
But this is what I get, and the phone calls, and the text messages, and, and that's why I'm-
Support from us is very different than using their account.
Correct, so, so that's why I was like, what the heck is going on? So just wanted to, so if he's mad that he didn't get his million dollar grant application, you were correct. I'm the one that told Leslie that, that, when she asked me to do it, that email, I said, oh, didn't it end up in your junk folder? Because he needed it by the end of the day.
I'll take blame too, though, she called me, I said, don't. So, I mean, we're all on board with not doing that.
Well, is there any recourse to them?
I don't know, well, understand I couldn't get ahold of some commissioners, so I didn't know if I was-
Boy, and I'm-
But even if she could get ahold, we still have to do it in a public meeting, and I think that's why we're bringing it up, is just to remind everyone, okay?
I just don't like, I just don't like the fact that somebody went out there and they're representing Morgan County.
Well, we, when he talked to me, he didn't, he did not say that we, it was him that was doing the grant, not us. And we would not have any kind of a match, and I says, okay, if all you need is a letter of support, or whatever it is, fine. And, and then I guess he talked to Matt also. So whatever, and I just sent you over, Kate, a email, a follow-up email from the Fed, I guess, that has some more information on it.
And so Commissioner Fat Girl, I would just say, though, even if you're on board with it, you could say, I would support a letter of support, but we have to get a quorum. I, I think that we still need to follow that process, so that one commissioner isn't committing the county, or, or making, or potentially giving some sort of, where they say, oh, I detrimentally relied upon your statement, and I went and did whatever. I would just always phrase it as, you know, I'm one of five, and I, I think getting grant money's great, and so you, you know, if you brought it forward and you wanted a letter of support, I would support that, but we still need to get a quorum.
So Blaine, that email was in reference to that application, that was the application. The IFAC was what they were trying to apply for.
Okay, so, so basically, when I told him, I says, well, you can talk to the other commissioners, because I'm one of four, but the person you need to contact is Kate. So that's where it went to Kate. How's it going to you, Kate?
You were in Rome for this whole thing. Still one of five, but yes.
And it's three thirty, three forty AM in Rome.
Oh, God, okay.
Home last night?
Okay, all right, we're gonna, we're gonna move on then. We are going to go into closed session, so I need a motion on that. Somebody got their card out?
I'll move to go into closed session for the purpose of discussing the purchase, purchase exchange or lease of real property. And I believe the discussion character and professional competency or mental health of an individual. Was there something else that I need to add to that? You're aware of, okay?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Newton, second by Commissioner Nickerson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?